Nice crowd tonight. We welcome all of you, thanks for being here, you're welcome anytime. We will start this evening with the roll call, Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Harvey is absent. Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Soynier?
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, if you all will rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we can get away from the agenda for just a second here, I'm gonna turn over the microphone to our city manager, David Butterby.
Mayor Levy, thank you. This evening, just a couple of quick announcements. City Attorney Aaron Smith is not with us tonight, but instead is capable council Kristen Sisowski. So Kristen, welcome, we look forward to your contributions this evening. Secondly, council and audience, I think you know how quite proud I am of our senior city staff and all of our staff, the fact that we're well certified, we're well qualified, and we work hard for continuing education. And tonight, I have the pleasure of announcing that our own city clerk Suzanne Leclair has been honored with Master Municipal Clerk. So I want to read a little bit about that before we make the presentation. And as I look in the back, I want you to know that not only do we consider ourselves a family, but Suzanne's real family is here, because this is indeed a special time. The Master Municipal Clerk Program is the second and more advanced of the two professional designations granted by International Institute of Municipal Clerks. The Master Municipal Clerk Program is an advanced continuing education program, you don't need to take notes on this.
I'm okay.
Always a clerk, that prepares participants to perform complex municipal duties. The program has an extensive and rigorous educational component and a professional contribution component. The Master Municipal Clerk applicant must demonstrate that they actively pursued education and professional activities and have remained informed of current socio-political, cultural, and economic issues that affect local governments and municipalities. Some of the requirements, they're very complex, than to be a certified municipal clerk, you would expect that. The subject matters may be similar, but they're more in-depth and they're certainly more difficult. In order to meet the requirements of Master Municipal Clerk designation, the individual must hold a certified municipal clerk designation in good standing, and Suzanne has that. She must be an active member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and she is that. She must attain 60 points in Advanced Education category totaling over 120 hours of academic study. She must attain 40 points in Professional Contribution categories, which include teaching classes and community volunteering totaling over 80 hours. Suzanne has been diligent over the last several years to achieve this. In the state of Colorado, where there are over 260 municipalities, she is number 35. Thirty-five out of 260. Have attained a Master Municipal Clerk. In our entire country, she's one of 1,308. So Suzanne, on behalf of a grateful community, the mayor and I would like to present to you your Master of Municipal Clerk certification.
Thank you. Hi. How are you? This is my son, Donovan Denver. Yes, my daughter. From down the road.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Do you have to say something? You do? Okay. Well, what I would like to say is, I would like to thank, excuse me.
I'll take this.
I would like to thank the council and the city manager for their support during this process. If it wasn't for the council and city manager allowing me to do this, I would not have been able to attain the Master Municipal Clerk. I have quite a few clerk friends whose municipalities do not support them through the process, so I just want to let you all know, thank you. And I promise to the citizens, I'll serve you as best as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Mayor gets to add some stuff on when he wants to, so here's one of those times. What you see here is what you get when you come to Suzanne, when you come to the office, when you see her on the street, when you see her at Walmart, wherever you see her, big smile on her face, great representative of Woodland Park, and so it goes a lot deeper and it goes a lot further than sitting in her office and doing a great job 365 days a year. And so we can all take a lesson from Suzanne Leclair, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You want to say anything else?
I just said that somehow.
Okay, that's it, we'll move on. Agenda item number three, ceremonies presentations, and we're lucky tonight to start with Cruise Above the Clouds and Phil Ayton. Come on up, Phil, I'll let you start with this, because you do an amazing job.
The first thing I'd like to do is present the mayor with a little token of our appreciation to the city, the staff, the community. I want to thank you all for coming out for Cruise Above the Clouds. Oh wait a second, I heard for something else. Anyway, Neil, if you can join me. Neil, you were there, a couple of the city council members were there, and to have this event this year with the new park, and I'll go over some of the specifics of what we were able to do this year, but this was our poster from this year that we had framed, we do this for the city every year, is presented to the city of Woodland Park in appreciation for generous support of the Cruise Above the Clouds 2017 to benefit Teller County charities. So Neil, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, not only with having the new park, and David, I want to thank you personally, and Chief, I want to thank you personally, and of course Cindy from Park and Rec, it was really special. We did a couple of new things, our trophies this year were Michael Garman statues, they were autographed by Michael Garman, that was a special award that people got. And probably the biggest thing we did this year is, we awarded our grant, we decided who our grant recipients were early, and we awarded checks the day of the show, and during the intermission of the awards, checks in the amount of $20,000. We physically gave them checks of $20,000. Now, that didn't total our total commitment, because those grants didn't include the $2,000 scholarships that we give to the high schools, for the industrial arts kids, there were two of those, one for Woodland Park, one for Cripple Creek. It didn't include the service organizations that we give money to, the Kiwanos, the Rotaries, and American Legion, and it didn't include the money that we were proud to donate to our park system, so that we could have a long-lasting memory in the park of the Cruise Above the Clouds. In total, this year, we gave $24,000 back to the community. And we did that all in front of all the people that registered for the show, it was really a special thing for us. Probably more impressive than that is, this show, over the 26 years of its history, exceeded $320,000 that we've given back to the nonprofits in Teller County. So it is, I mean, it really is good to the community, and that's why we do this event. Of course, our sponsors are very instrumental in what we do. I'll read off quickly the list of charities that we picked for money this year. There were a couple of new ones, but we felt it was important that we participated in them. The Animal Adoptive Animal Rescue Force, the Aspen Mine, American Legion, Community Cupboard, Community Partnership Center, Daybreak, Focus on the Forest, Help the Needy, Kiwanos, the Mountaintop Cycling Group, Little Chapel Food Pantry, Prospect Home Care and Hospice, Rotary, the Symphony Above the Clouds, Teller County Search and Rescue, Teller County Regional Animal Shelter, Teller Senior Coalition, and the Woodland Park Senior Center. They all received monies from us this year, and it was a real honor to do that. The last thing I'm gonna mention, we all talked last year about Dennis Gage, that show's been airing all summer, and will continue to air through the fall. There was a new partnership that just developed between Dennis and Phil Longford, to where Phil Longford is gonna be name and title sponsor for My Classic Car, which is gonna do 13 episodes on KRDO TV on Sundays at 10:30. And a lot of that footage will be footage that we haven't seen from the Woodland Park Show and the Cripple Creek Show. So that's gonna be pretty cool, 13 30-minute episodes that Phil Long sponsored. So with that, I thank you all for your support and look forward to next year.
It's interesting, during budget workshops and budget sessions this year, we had discussions about seed money for different organizations that we helped to have their event in town. Let it be known, for those that don't know, the Cruise Above the Clouds was given $1,000 this year, and returned 24 times that amount to the community. And so this just doesn't happen, folks, I don't know if I could name any other group, I'm probably forgetting somebody, but I can't think of anybody that takes the seed money that the city gives them and has a return like this group does. And again, I've got to reiterate, $320,000 over a period of time, all for those great nonprofits in our community. So one more time, I think it's important, a big round of applause for Phil and Cruise Above the Clouds. Okay, we move on, and the Woodland Park Hockey Association and Cindy Keating.
Good evening, Mayor Levy and councilmembers. Before I introduce the Hockey Association, I would first like to recognize them for their volunteer time that they provided us on June 14th for the Memorial Park Grand Opening in Ribbon Cutting. Specifically, Landis Seebolt and Matt Gum, they coordinated the volunteers and prepared food, and served food, and cleaned everything up for us, so we could all enjoy that event. So thank you very much, you guys are amazing. And now, I'd like to introduce, tonight, representing the Hockey Association is Landis Seebolt, Matt Gum, and Gina and Tom Toronto, and Tom's gonna come up here and do his presentation. Tom, will you join me at the podium?
Excuse me, Tom, just before you start, you and Gina, just give us your name and your address, just for the record, please.
Tom Toronto, and 77 L. Park Road, Woodland Park.
Gina Toronto.
Same address.
Same address.
Okay, thanks. As Cindy said, my name's Tom Toronto, and I'm part of the Meadowwood Sports Complex Improvement Project. We moved here as a family about 10 years ago, and a couple of the reasons why, do I need to?
Thank you.
Okay. Couple of the reasons why we moved here was, one, because they had an ice rink, and two, because they had a hockey program. It was something that we got ourselves involved with for 10 years, and during those 10 years, there's been talk about putting a roof over the hockey rink, and only over the last two years, we've taken an expanded view of that roof over the hockey rink, and looked at it as a roof over an area that would benefit the whole community, our community and surrounding communities, year-round. So that is part of our push to raise some money, to get a roof over this hockey rink, and go ahead and try to make it a year-round facility. So let me go to the PowerPoint, we have the first page there. It says it's the Meadowwood Sports Complex Improvement Project, and it's a community collaboration, and that's what I want you to take away from this, it's a community collaboration, even though Woodland Park Hockey Association is facilitating this, it is something that's going to benefit the whole community and not just the Hockey Association. What this is, is 28,500 square feet of covered outdoor, year-round multi-use space. It includes public facilities, building with five locker rooms, you can call them whatever you want, referee, first aid room, restroom, storage, indoor concessions, gathering room, office space, nice viewing, and gazebo entrance. Where this will be is at the Meadowwood Sports Complex, and whoops, excuse me, where it will be is at the Meadowwood Sports Complex, and it's the outdoor rink there, and again, a year-round facility is gonna be used by our community and surrounding communities. Who's gonna be using this? Open to all residents and communities, recreation, cultural, and sports groups and more, trade fairs, art exhibits, gift and home shows, plays, family reunions, community meetings, birthday parties, group functions, fundraising events, outdoor dances, and endless possibilities with 28,500 square foot of covered space. This is gonna be an indoor-outdoor type facility. When is this gonna take place? The fundraising is undergoing right now, we'll start our kickoff on Saturday, there's some brochures in the back, you can look at the details for that, from 10 until 2 over at the Meadowwood Sports Center. So that's gonna be somewhere we go. For more information, go to Woodland Park Hockey, or excuse me, WoodlandParkRoof.com. Like I mentioned, the kickoff is Saturday, the 23rd, 10 to 2, whoops, there you go, 10 to 2, we're gonna have silent auction, which is closed to Saturday, but it's still open right now, you can go online to that, you can find out more information about that on the brochures in the back, there's two brochures, explaining the whole project and explaining what we have going on on Saturday. Dunk tank, door prizes, carnival games, food, music, fun for the whole family. That's basically it. There's a picture of the facility, there could be some changes made to that, this is a work in progress, we hope to have it completed by the winter of 2019, and we're getting a lot of people involved in the whole project. Any questions?
I'm sure there's a few, I'll start with a couple.
Okay.
One, can you give us a sense for why you're here? It's good to know, I'm guessing you'd like some help from the city. Two, any sense of what this is gonna cost you?
Okay.
And three, my understanding was that with a roof, but not a enclosure, if you will, then we're going to get a certain amount of hockey time extra, but not year-round, because it wouldn't be totally enclosed. Can you help us with those three questions?
Sure. We have talked with the city, they're willing to help us out wherever they can, there hasn't been any type of monetary figures disclosed at this time, how much they're willing to help us out with the project. The project cost is approximately 2.9 million, the cost goes up year after year as construction costs do go up. So that's about where we're at right now with the cost, and the third question?
The year-round effectiveness, can you play hockey in the summer when you're done with this building?
The rink, as some might know, is facilitated with under-cement plumbing, and it can be turned into a refrigerated ice rink, which will extend the season. The roof by itself will extend it about a month on each end of the season, and that's what we're looking at right now, not so much at the end of the season, but more at the beginning of the season, so that we would not be able to, or one, not have to rent as much ice downtown, so which would help the hockey program monetarily, and also the high school hockey program monetarily, so we wouldn't have to rent as much ice. But keep in mind that this is not just for the hockey community, it's something that's gonna be used year-round, and the facility really has not been used year-round, and that's what we really want to expand our focus on, from the Hockey Association and ice skating in the wintertime, to a year-round multi-use facility.
Tom, 2019's gonna be here tomorrow, and 2.9 million doesn't come easily, what are your thoughts for fundraising?
My wife Gina has been applying for various grants, she is a professional grant writer, has been doing so for close to 20 years, and she has been applying for these grants, the next grant that will be up will be the GOCO grant, will be applying for that grant here before the end of the year.
Great. Council, I'm sure you have questions, no?
That is a great picture there, I didn't, when I thought of a roof, I thought of just a roof, I didn't think about that look. When I first, when I think about hockey year-round, I think about college, and I think about my broom hockey years. You ever think about that, Cindy?
Well.
Broom hockey. What about other sports, maybe indoor soccer, indoor lacrosse, indoor football? There's a lot.
There's many sports groups can use this if the weather's not that good, volleyball, soccer, like you mentioned, there's a lot of different areas you can practice indoors here, and this facility will accommodate that with all the locker rooms, the restrooms, concessions, warming area, or meeting area, so there is all that available there. When we, we talked about this before, we talked about just the roof, and it did not include all those extra facilities in this stage, and we talked about maybe using the ice year-round. That's not in the target zone right now for this stage of development of that area. There's a possibility of getting some refrigeration equipment from some various different places, donated possibly, some new boards, some new glass, but that's hockey-specific. As the area is now, and once it's completed, it will be an area that can be used by many different groups, like I had mentioned.
Is there, I thought there was artificial ice, is that, am I thinking of?
There's no artificial ice, we have to wait for the cold weather right now, so we're, it's all weather-dependent, but there is piping underneath, so if we get a refrigeration system, that that piping can be utilized to get a little extra time, even more than the month prior if we just have the roof, but if we have the roof and the refrigeration, that will get us on the ice even sooner, if we're just talking about hockey. I mean, we're all talking about hockey quite a bit right now, because I'm from the Hockey Association, keep in mind that we are the facilitators of this, and we want other people to know that there's many uses for this facility. 28,500 square feet is a huge area, you could do a lot of stuff in that area that's covered, and I would say 50 to 60 percent open around the sides, so you still get the feel for that open-type facility. But any event that's, needs a covered facility, surely they could come here and look what we have to offer.
And Tom, I've always been a proponent, because I see it as a great revenue source. Explain to the folks what it costs for an hour of ice.
You're easily up to $230 per hour of ice right now. We have been sharing ice quite a bit, which has not been a big problem, but as you get a little older, you want to have a full sheet of ice now and then, so to have the association or anyone else, say in the Colorado Springs area, pay $230 on up for ice, that could be a pretty big hit. If we get to the point where the facility is open sooner, we have more ice times available, it could be a revenue for the city too, to rent that out, if we get to that point.
Council? Well, Tom, one thing I can assure you, during goals and objectives, this will be a topic of conversation. Where the city's concerned, that's the best I can tell you right now, but I'll guarantee you that we will at least have that discussion. We're interested always in partnering, so if we see GOCO grants and different kind of opportunities that you guys are taking advantage of, I think it'll go a long way in having us make a positive decision. And so, you know, go as hard as you can, and I know there's a big community out there that are willing to help, they see the value, and we seem to have more and more kids skating all the time, witness the fact, we're gonna have a high school hockey team for the first time in our history. So kudos to all of you that have been part of that, and trust me on this, we will discuss it, and if you give us some backing prior to that, I can almost assure you that at least it will become a little better received.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, no additions, deletions, or corrections, so we'll move on to the consent calendar, and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, on tonight's consent calendar, we have two items, we have the approval of the minutes from the September 7th, 2017 regularly scheduled council meeting, and we have the approval of the August 2017 Statement of Expenditures.
Thank you, Suzanne. Council, we have questions, concerns, comments? If not, we'll call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 6-0.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. No one finished business tonight, or ordinances on initial postings, so we'll move right to public hearings, and considering Stone Ridge Village, and Sally Riley, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Levy, councilmembers, I'll just pull up my PowerPoint here and dive right in. Okay. The case this evening is for the Stone Ridge Village filing number three, final plat and subdivision development agreement. This is a major subdivision containing almost 12 acres, with 28 lots that range from 12,300 square feet to almost 21,000 square feet, and there will be two new roads associated with this subdivision, Firestone Drive and Ridgestone Drive. This is in a planned unit development, PUD for short, and this is this evening's public hearing. There was a planning commission hearing on August 24th, of which the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the final plat. Just to begin by orienting you on the location of the site, it is up Highway 67, a little ways, about a mile to the Stone Ridge subdivision, and it's a little bit on the interior of this subdivision. Here's an aerial of the site, which is highlighted in white, this is the almost 12 acres that shows the existing Stone Ridge subdivision to the southeast, that was platted several years ago in 2004. The first two filings of Stone Ridge are now nearly built out with 71 lots. This 28-lot subdivision will provide additional lots on the market. I think I'd like to point out that this also is adjacent to Eagle Pine subdivision, and that the balance of this property of Stone Ridge was annexed into the city in 2002, it was Firestone Drive and Ridgestone Drive. This is in a planned unit development, PUD for short. And this is this evening's public hearing. There was a planning commission hearing on August 24, of which the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the final plat. Just to begin by orienting you on the location of the site. It is up Highway 67, a little ways, about a mile, to the Stone Ridge subdivision. And it's a little bit on the interior of this subdivision. Here's an aerial of the site, which is highlighted in white. This is the almost 12 acres. That shows the existing Stone Ridge subdivision to the southeast. That was platted several years ago in 2004. The first two filings of Stone Ridge are now nearly built out with 71 lots. This 28-lot subdivision will provide additional lots on the market. I think I'd like to point out that this also is adjacent to Eagle Pine subdivision, and that the balance of this property of Stone Ridge was annexed into the city in 2002. It was then final-platted and preliminary-platted in 2004. So here is the zoning map that shows the almost 200 acres of Stone Ridge in lavender. The subject property is highlighted in red. And you can see the existing platted road, Stone Ridge Drive, that connects with Kelly's Road and Highway 67, Tarmigan Drive, and Snowshoe Court. I know this is hard to see. This is the preliminary plat from 2004. And the squiggly red lines are the subject property. When you have approval of a preliminary plat, it is done at the same time that the PUD is approved. And the final plat is almost exactly the same as the preliminary plat. So it is consistent. Preliminary plat is the most important part of subdividing property, because at that time, they lay out the roads, the infrastructure, and utilities, and drainage. And that was all done back in 2004. Here is a segment of the preliminary plat. I oriented it this way, so that it would be in an orientation of north. You can see the new Firestone Drive, which then will connect with Ridgestone Drive, and the 28 lots that will be adjacent to these public streets. I do want to point out that there is a variance request. There was a requirement for a 25-foot frontage on all lots within Stone Ridge. This flag lot and the lot just to the north of it are slightly less than 25 feet. But it does not make a substantive difference in access. There is still adequate access to this property, those two lots. Show you the existing conditions, although these photos were taken over a month ago. And the one on the left shows the extension of Stone Ridge Drive towards the west. The picture on the right shows the excavator working on Firestone Drive. All the utilities for water and sewer have been installed, as well as service lines off the main lines. That's what this excavator is working on right now, a month ago. And the project manager Skip House is here this evening. He'll be able to give you a more detailed update as to the status of the improvements to the subdivision. You can see on Firestone Drive, this is a very buildable area. It's relatively flat. And these 28 lots will fit very nicely into this area. And they are adjacent to an open space that is deeded to the city. With the original PUD, over 70 acres of open space and park were donated to the city or set aside, part of which Meadowwood Park, where the ball fields, the Panther Field, and the soccer fields are. That was a result of this planned unit development, in terms of the land being donated. Also wanted to show you, the photo on the left is a detention pond. This is one of two very large detention ponds that serve this subdivision. Those were all designed to be able to handle the capacity of the runoff for 100-year storm, plus a five-year storm, plus 75% of a two-year storm. So that detention pond has been functioning well. The second detention pond is further to the north, up near toward Research Drive. The photo on the right is, are the existing homes in Snowshoe Court. So this filing number three will be somewhat similar to this existing street. As far as the code compliance for a final plat, most of this is fairly technical, straightforward, with a surveyor. In fact, the first thing we look at is to ensure that all the information is correct on the plat. It is drawn by a professionally licensed surveyor, and we have reviewed that criteria. The purpose of this final plat is well-designed, 28-lot subdivision with the new roads, utilities, drainage, adequate access, parks, open space, and sidewalks. The site consideration is suitable for development with adequate services for fire protection, utility connections, drainage, grading, and erosion control. As far as the frontage, all but two of the lots do meet the minimum frontage requirement of 25 feet. Lots four and five, I've already pointed out to you. Easements, we have looked at closely, along with the easements for IREA, electrical service. There is a request that we do need, one, utility drainage easement to be slightly wider between lots six and seven, which the applicant can handle easily. This is a 30-foot wide drainage and sewer easement. It has both storm sewer and sanitary sewer in this easement, which is why it needs to be 30 feet wide. The lots, again, are very buildable. The land intensity ratios for this size lot will be set between 25 and 20%. That means that the footprint of the house will range, cannot exceed more than 3,000 to 3,600 square feet. So all complies. The final plat was referred out to our city staff, public works, utilities, parks and rec, finance. The outside agencies that review these plats include IREA, the Fire District, Black Hills Energy, Century Link, and Cable. Public notices were properly posted, with adjoining property owners, receiving letters, notices in the courier, and postings. Again, the planning commission held a public hearing on August 24, and recommended approval of the final plat with eight conditions. One of those eight conditions included a subdivision development agreement. Whenever a final plat is reviewed by council and approved, if some of the infrastructure is not completed, then a SDA, subdivision development agreement, is required, first to provide collateral for the unfinished improvements. And right now, curb gutter has just begun this week. The paving of the streets, the sidewalks, revegetation, and street signs are all outstanding infrastructure or improvement. As a result, an irrevocable letter of credit for 150% of the value of those improvements, which total almost $427,000, $100,000, is, was emailed out to all of you. It's from Kirkpatrick Bank. So we have the collateral in hand for those improvements. The agreement also specifies that these improvements will be done based upon the construction drawings that were approved by the city engineer last December. There's an acceptance and a warranty process that's identified in this agreement. It is consistent with our engineering specifications. There are zoning development permit and CO requirements also identified in the agreement. And then there's a list of special conditions, a few of which are conditions of approval of the final plat. But unique to this is the requirement for as-built. The looping of a water line to Research Drive is going to be triggered after the first 12 ZDP, or houses that are issued building permits. There's no transportation capital fees that are assessed for this subdivision. That's because at the annexation, there was a negotiation or an agreement that the developer would provide off-site improvements to Highway 67. There were turn lanes added to Highway 67, and improvements done, as well as plans for a future traffic signal that were installed with the conduit under the highway. The developer has also, the city proposed a letter of credit that the city is currently holding for a future traffic signal. That's in the amount of $82,000. And we have been working with CDOT to get that traffic signal on their radar. They're telling us now that it's potentially programmed for 2020. So in a few years, we should have a traffic signal at that intersection. There's also sidewalk installation deadlines that are highlighted in this agreement that I'll go over with the conditions of approval. There are two motions associated with this request. The first motion is to move to approve the subdivision development agreement, accepting the irrevocable letter of credit as presented. And then the second motion is that based upon the findings described in the staff report, the testimony that you'll hear tonight, and the evidence provided, that you move to approve the final plat for Stone Ridge Village, filing three, with a variance to two, 25-foot minimum frontage requirements for lot four and five, subject to the following conditions. First, we need to see the final plat amended with three areas. And I'm not going to read all of these. I'm just going to highlight them verbally. It's all in your staff report. First is that easement that I mentioned that needs to be a little wider. We are requesting a note on the final plat that will not allow fencing within the easement adjacent to the open space. This is because there is a sewer main that is right underneath that lot line. And we would prefer, for maintenance reasons, to be able to have access to that within the easement and the open space. And then lastly, a note that would specify the maximum site coverage. Condition number two deals with the limit for the first 12 dwelling units, which will be on a dead-end water line. Once the 13th home is issued a permit, then the developer will be, is required to have looped the water line, connected it to the north to Research Drive. The developer agrees with that. So this is an important safety aspect for fire flow and looping of our water line. Condition number three deals with water development fees. It's $1,200 per lot, or $33,600 for the total plat. This has to be paid prior to recording this final plat. Number four is the requirement for title insurance for the dedicated road rights away of 2.234 acres in the amount of $24,000 per acre. Number five is that the developer shall provide the city with a copy of their covenants. This is purely a routine for us not to critique, but to have as informational purposes. And then lastly, or number six, we are asking for permission to have access to the utilities through the unplatted property, since there are utility lines that are outside this subdivision that will be serving this subdivision, and we do need access for maintenance. Lastly, number seven is the sidewalk construction will take place in the first year after recording the final plat by either the builders. Or the developer will finish out those sidewalks with the provision that he can extend it by six months, depending upon weather. So with that, staff and the planning commission recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer questions. And Mr. House is also here to help answer questions.
Thanks very much, Sally, counsel.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested in this, I don't know, I can't remember which one it is, but the maximum only 12 dwelling units per engineering specifications. Would it be possible for, if somebody could speak to that with the, yes, with the diagram?
Sure. So within this platted area, they can construct up to four residential homes, or I'm sorry, 12 residential homes on any of these lots. Once they exceed that 12, there's the requirement for the water line looping, which they will continue the water main through here to the north to Research Drive, which is basically where the bus barn is now. I don't know if you're familiar with that area?
Right up to here. So there's a Rufton Road right now. So right now, it will, the water mains will end here at the platted boundary. And then they will install up to here to connect with Research Drive.
So it's not a designated 12, it's some 12 in there?
Correct.
Some 12.
Skip, help us understand, if you will, why we do those water loops? What's the purpose of it? And why we, why we have to have this?
One, reliability. Two, fire protection.
Noel?
Can you go back to the plots? The ones on the south?
Oops.
The southeast, that's the water main on the very back side, right? On all these plots in the southeast, that's the water main?
That's a sewer main?
A sewer main?
Yes.
They can't build fences on any of those?
Within the easement, they can't build a fence.
For some reason, I thought it was just the last plot, the very corner plot that you mentioned was part of the condition.
No, it's that entire length.
It is, okay. I didn't, maybe the verbiage wasn't, wasn't that well. I thought it was the corner lot, but it was the concern.
Excuse me, Noel, and everybody, please. And it's not for us to hear and hear, but we need to speak into the microphone so that the people at home that are listening can hear. So, thank you, sir. I'm in the same boat as you, so remind me if I forget.
That's really all I had to say. I think the verbiage needs to be changed to point out the specific lots.
I believe we did, and that note?
If you did, I didn't see it, but...
It says on the lot lines of lots five through 16.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sally, this development's been going on for quite some time, and at least early 2000s. Can you just characterize for us, other than the fact that Mr. Duncan gave the city 70 acres of property for Meadowwood Park? How's the relationship, how they've been? I may have misstated that, so you can correct me there. Refer to the 70 acres in our relationship with Mr. Duncan from our past dealings, if you would.
Sure. Let me go back to the aerial, because it gives a good show of the overall. The portion that was dedicated to Meadowwood Park was about another 22 acres to the park. So there's a total of 40 acres, 42 acres in Meadowwood Park, approximately. And that was to... And that was to fulfill his park dedication requirement. And then the open space, there's a tract that's right behind here that has been dedicated. There's also this tract that's off of the curve on Stone Ridge, which makes for a nice buffer. This is planned for commercial and multifamily out by the highway. Then off this aerial, there's a large, steep area of open space that could be dedicated in the future, and there's also a possibility for a future water tank site on that tract. So the relationship and what was established in 2004 with the preliminary plat, here's that area off to the west for the water tank site, and it's been excellent.
And I'm guessing, and I know for sure, that as a result of the economy, these things take a little bit longer than we'd like to, so I know there's a major investment as a result, and, and so I just, just want to make that clear. Counsel, what else do we have? Mr. Schaefer?
Would you point out to me Snowshoe Court?
Oh, sure. I know this is hard to see, but Snowshoe Court is right here. It's just north of the Aspindell property that was recently rezoned, and I took the photo toward the end of the cul-de-sac.
Now, that squiggly red line, as you said, represents the, the boundary. And if there is some small difference between what was called out and planted earlier, what is that difference?
It's, it's negligible. It may be a little bit different, frontage, slightly frontage, but very small. These are really very similar to the preliminary plat. Our code does allow them to make some adjustments. They don't have to be exactly, as long as the integrity of that preliminary plat is still maintained.
Thank you. Anybody else? More questions? We thank you, Sally. Mr. Howes, I don't even know if, if you'd like to come, you're more than welcome. Give us your name and address.
Skip Howes, Rep. Project Manager for Stone Ridge Village, 300 Sunny Glen Court. I'm going to give you a little bit more information to kind of let you know where we are. Right now, as Sally said, water and sewer, and our storm boxes, inlet boxes are installed and in place. You know, as everything goes on in the field, we have different things that come up to play. We had, we had an opportunity where we had a conflict in our engineering design, where our storm sewer line went right through the middle of some property pins, and that's where the city wants to have their shut-off valves for the water and their cleanouts for the sewer. We worked with Kip and the staff to make some infield adjustments to get those things squared away, put tracer wires on it so we can have a good product, good product to handle our stormwater and, and still meet the requirements of where the shut-off valves would go. So, we're at that point. Today, we put string in, if you want to call it, for, for the lay-down machine that will actually come in and, and form the curb and gutter. They're scheduled for nine o'clock tomorrow to start putting, putting concrete down. So if you're really kind of interested in what the heck this goes and the technology that is there today, you know, come on out and let us know you're coming. It is a construction site, so wear sturdy shoes, and we don't have to worry about anybody flying over us or dropping anything on your heads, but if you'd like, you know, like most guys do, they like to watch heavy equipment work and have fun doing that. So, if you're interested in doing that, just come on out and give us a holler. Our plan basically is, the scheduled calls for the formed curbing is going to be installed tomorrow, and on Saturday, they're going to finish up hopefully with the formed-in-place concrete for the balance of the curb and gutter into our drop structures and the like. Our goal and objective with the rains that we had, we're about two and a half to three weeks behind schedule, so our plan was actually to have asphalt in place before we came to you. Martin Marietta is going to be doing the asphalt, and with the weather coming in Sunday and Monday, we'll be looking at the weather based on that and bring them in Tuesday, Wednesday, or whenever. They'll have to blade the road to get the 3% crown in place, and then they should be two days at the most, and they'll have it blacked or asphalt. And at that point, we'll have our drainage system completely in place and under control, so if it rains, the water's going to go where it's supposed to go, right? With that in mind, then, once that curb's in, we've got to come in behind the curb and regrade and get ready for REA to come in. REA is doing joint trench for their electric along with TDS and Peak Internet with regards to putting the low-volt infrastructure in for that. And then as soon as REA gets through, Black Hills Energy's going to come in and drop in their two-inch gas main as a loop coming up both sides of the road and tie into the existing gas main that runs through Stone Ridge right now. Our, our plan basically would be that since we have to make sure our notes and all the things are added to the plat that you all tell us to do and we've agreed to do, we're probably going to have somewhere between seven to 10 days of Rampart doing their work to get the plat ready for Planning Commission and the mayor to sign and the like. So I'm hoping that by the time the plat comes to you for signature, the only thing we'll have to actually have in our final letter of credit is going to be revegetation and maybe street signs, and the sidewalk. The bill, the plan and the reason why we did the sidewalk, and the sidewalk, if you look at the map, runs through this, see if I can get my brain to work here, it runs down this side of the road, and it ties into an eight-foot sidewalk that runs along the extension of Stone Ridge Drive. The reason why we're doing that five-foot sidewalk, we're calling that the builder sidewalk. It doesn't make sense in my world to put in concrete and then tear it out to put it in again. So the objective is, let's let the builders come in, build the houses, and put the sidewalks in from lot line to lot line. And then if it turns out 12 to 18 months from now, we've got to fill in some, some lots that aren't completed, we'll put in our sidewalk along that section so that people can, can get through. And the easement that Sally mentioned that we needed to increase a little bit to 30 feet, we're also looking at that as a pedestrian way to tie this neighborhood sidewalk to the open space parcel that runs east on the back end of this area. One of the things that did happen as we came through with research that Rampart Surveys did, is they discovered in somewhat real, a reality that we really didn't know where the Northwoods Outfall sewer line was. Kip's, and what was great about getting that line located, and I don't know whether you did it with cameras or whatever you did, but we went out one day, and there were all these nice little green flags running down, down the back lot lines. So Rampart was able to actually locate that and confirm that it was in the easement along the backside of filing three. So what's going to happen after filing three? As soon as we're finished with filing three, our plan is to cut earthworks loose to continue the water main installation from filing three to Research Drive. So we anticipate that before the 12 houses are even in place or pulled, that we hope to make that connection. Now, there's some interesting stuff going on at Research Drive. We've got sewer and water and three-phase power and power poles and all, a bunch of stuff going in there. So it's going to be a little bit interesting once we get to that particular section to make that interface. And then based on market absorption on filing three on those 28 lots, we already have the construction drawings approved for filing four, which would connect the dots from filing three to Research Drive. And if the market absorption goes based on what we're hearing from our builder group, we may progress with not only the water line, but the sewer line installation and, and roughing in the roads to get ready for, for a spring, once the frost is out of the ground, to start putting the curb and gutter and getting that asphalt and electrical and all that in. So, we're hoping. We're hoping the economy will, will continue on, builders will be able to pull taps, and maybe we'll hit my recommended, recommended target for the taps for 2017. Keep your fingers crossed.
And you talked about 12 to 18 months in market absorption. Do you think that that will be built out in, in 18 months?
I think it, based on what we're getting from our builder group, we think their interest is going to be much in advance of that. How, how long will it take them to actually build the 28 houses amongst the various builder groups that we're dealing with? You know, if they build so many a month, it, it probably going to take them 12 months, would be my guess. So we'll have to have a product available for them to continue on and, and maybe even to bring to the open market in filing four.
It's an exciting time. I know how long you guys have waited for this, so, you know, great job and, you know, best of luck to you.
Thank you. I actually had darker hair when this started.
You sure did. I bet I did, too.
I guess one final thing that, that I would like to say on behalf of Kip and staff, dealing with, with Phil Piles out in the field, the construction inspector, he's been a joy to work with. He's got a positive attitude, customer service oriented. He's there to help us, to help us work through the issues that we have to work through. We have questions about city code and the like and how we get things, he's there. If we have an issue we need to resolve in the field, he brings Kip in and they get things done. So I just want to say, thank you to you guys, it's a pleasure to work with you. David, you've got a great team.
Skip, thanks very much. Before you leave, let me just see, do you have any questions for Mr. Howes? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are in public comment. Would anybody like to come to the podium and talk about this particular issue? Counsel, anything else? Mr. Carr?
Sally, remind me why we're breaking this up into two motions, please.
The code requires you to approve the subdivision development agreement first, and to ensure that we do have that guarantee in place, and then you can approve the final plat.
Thank you.
Can you bring those motions up?
I sure can.
So, you can?
Go.
I make a motion.
Thank you, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, I make a motion. That we approve the subdivision as written.
Second.
MS is for motion number one. Is that okay?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. We have a motion and a second for motion number one. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Suzanne. Motion number two?
Move approval of motion number two as presented for Stone Ridge Village filing number three.
Second? A second from John. Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Skip, thanks very much. Sally, thank you. Congratulations, good luck. Okay. We have no new business tonight, so we're going to move on to public items not on the agenda. I have a list of many that would like to speak tonight, and if you have not signed up on my signup sheet, that does not preclude you from speaking. So I'll start with these, and we'll go from there. That said, I'm sure that a number of you are here to talk about fees for the Woodland Aquatic Project. There were some fees that were actually published. There's been a lot of conversation in the last couple of weeks, as everyone here well knows. There's been some changes, it's been a pretty fluid, no pun intended, process. And so, before we start, I would like to have our city manager, David Butterey, kind of give us an update as where we are to our fees right now, and then we will go right into public comment.
Thanks, Mayor. I've been looking forward to this discussion with the community and council for about a week and a half. Before we get started on the fee discussion, though, I do want to give you a quick update on the facility. I took these pictures yesterday afternoon, and if you look in the upper left-hand corner, that is the lap pool, and down in the bottom, you can see a little bit of water. They started filling that pool yesterday, and they're going to begin filling the leisure pool, which is in the lower right-hand corner, tomorrow. So you get a chance to see what the inside of the facility looks like. We're very excited to be able to present this to the community. The presentation that I want to give tonight is quite lengthy, but I believe that it will be very beneficial for the council and the citizens to hear some of the approaches that we had, some of the logic, some of the thinking that we went through. And it wasn't just the city staff, it was also members of the Woodland Aquatic Project Board. Several are in the audience this evening. Jerry Simon is here, the president, and I see Nancy here as well, and also Pete Peters. So, as we've gone through this process of, of the design, the construction, all the different things, we've had great assistance from the Woodland Aquatic Project. One of the things that we found throughout this entire process is that for every community that has an aquatic center, there are multiple approaches to how they determine the fees. And I'll go into some of those discussions a bit later. But please keep in mind that every aquatic center is very, I liken the decision-making process on establishing the fees to a chili cook-off. Why a chili cook-off? Well, because every person that enters the chili cook-off has presented their favorite chili. They may like more jalapenos, they may like more beans, they like, they like more bean. But every person likes their pot of chili just as they presented it. So the fee process has been a bit like making chili. There are some in the community who want fewer beans, fewer dollars for large families. There are some who want fewer jalapenos, they want fewer dollars for senior citizens. There are some in the community that want more jalapenos, they want seniors to pay more. It's been a very complex process. My responsibility, this responsibility of the city, is to make this bowl of chili that satisfies as many people as possible, that feeds as many people as possible for as long as possible. If we keep removing components from the chili pot, we're not going to be able to feed anybody. We won't have a facility that will work at all. So please keep that in mind as we go through this discussion. I've actually generated some handouts, so Kristen, if you'll take one and pass one down to council. And Suzanne, I've got 20 copies here, if we can scatter them out, please make sure Sarah and Karen get a copy and then scatter them out through the audiences, folks that are interested in this may want to see them. What I'll, what I'll say to you, counsel, is that we are trying to balance revenue, we're trying to balance expenses, we're trying to balance the community's expectations, we're trying to balance everything. We may find, as we go through this packet, that we have made some logic errors, and they may be errors that caused us to reduce prices. It could be logic errors that caused us to raise some of the fees for some of the particular components. One of the things that has been talked about within the community is the product that was the Woodland Aquatic Project feasibility study. It was that study that gave council the confidence that we could move forward with this project. During this, but I just want to reiterate some of the things that this study said it wanted to do. The primary goal of this study was to explore the community need and feasibility of an aquatic center in the city of Woodland Park through market analysis, review of previous studies, review of previous survey, survey results, and review of community meeting notes. What it doesn't say necessarily is that it was designed to provide a fee structure or a structure for hours of operation. It did make recommendations, but they were merely that. The operating pro forma represents a conservative approach to estimating expenses and revenues, and was completed, and this is important, based on the best information available and the basic understanding of the project. Fees and charges utilized for this study were generated from information gathered during the stakeholder and community input sessions and assessment of market value, and this is important in the Woodland Park area. The fee schedule was developed as the criteria for estimating revenues. Actual fees are subject to review and approval by the city of Woodland Park. So there was a component within the feasibility study that stated that the family rate would be $600. The family rate we're proposing is not $600. But remember that this was a recommendation so that they could determine revenues, so they could estimate revenues. They never suggested that it was absolutely what needed to occur. So at this point, and, and counsel, I would ask you, if you have questions on the content, not on the philosophy or the logic, but if I don't explain the intent of a slide, well, please stop me, but if you could hold your other questions till the end, we'll have plenty of time to discuss things in great detail. Now, audience and council, the next few slides are extremely busy. I'll walk us through them so there's a good understanding, but you're going to see a lot of color, and it's going to fill the area completely, and we'll have a chance to look And we'll have a chance to look at this, um, line by line, primarily so that you get the understanding that your staff has worked very hard to come up with what we think is a reasonable approach to these fees. It was provided to me via my contacts in the city manager world that the best thing to do was to create our fees based on our market. We determined that our market is the Manitou Springs, uh, facility and the YMCA. I will acknowledge upfront, as I have always, that the YMCA is a very different facility. It is still a touchstone. They still have many different things that are different than our aquatic center. But they still are a reasonable place for us to at least have a comparison with. I would suggest to you that the Manitou Springs facility is probably our closest, for lack of a better word, competition. And what we should look at probably is the thing we should compare ourselves to closely. You will see that in some of, in the chart, there are some that are written in black and some that are written in red. The ones that are in black are absolute numbers that we have from either us, from Manitou or from the Pike's Peak. Those that are in red were extrapolations. They're things or areas that those other entities did not have a category for. So we did our best to estimate based on what we could perceive as their logic, what their rates would be. So if you look at the first line, the youth, we said our youth would be two to 17. And that's important because under two is generally free if they're with a paid adult. They'll need to be with an adult anyway. If they're under two, they're not going to come into the facility. The YMCA says that a youth gets anything under 17. So if a child is six weeks old, they still pay and they pay rate. So if you just look across the horizontal line, you can see that our daily fee for youth is $5. For Manitou, it's four. And that's for resident and non-resident. We discussed many times that our fees were our fees. They would apply whether you're a citizen of Woodland Park, you're a citizen of Teller County, or if you're from Anchorage, Alaska. A fee is a fee is a fee. We know that about three tenths to four tenths of our sales tax comes from those folks who reside just outside of the city limits. So we chose not to have a resident and a non-resident rate. So for the daily structure, Manitou in the orange column has one set rate. They also have an opportunity for rates, uh, later on in the evening. But as we continue down the different categories, you will see, I think, that we compare relatively favorably to Manitou Springs for their daily rates. Yes, or a touch higher. We believe our facility has a bit more to offer and therefore it justifies the higher rate. If you look at the YMCA, those are the outdoor facilities. The indoor facility downtown doesn't have a daily rate. But the outdoor rate for Wilson and a couple of other pools, as you can see, are substantially higher than what we're suggesting for our daily rates for youth. Well, actually for all of them. You can see that we have a youth rate and under two rate. An adult rate. And we said that an adult, uh, is from 18 to 59 and that seniors begin at 60. And there's also been some discussion in the community about the discounts. I will talk about those discounts at the end of this in great detail to share with you what the logic is. The family pass, the daily pass, as you can see, is 24, slightly more than what Manitou is and slightly, significantly less than what the YMCA is for their outdoor swimming pools. This is where there is a great comparison with the YMCA. One of the things that we took from the comments from the community, uh, we had a flat rate for additional family members. We have now said a fifth family member, as you will see, we assume it's a youth and that fifth family member is less than the youth rate. Six and more family members is even less. So we believe through the daily use process, we have addressed some of the issues that were raised within the community. We're going to take a look at each individual category. Monthly category, neither we nor Manitou have monthly rates. We have a thing called a plunge card. Some users of facilities are used to those being called a punch pass. I'll show you those at the end. We believe that that punch card will satisfy those folks who desire something between a daily rate and a three-month pass. YMCA however, does have a monthly fee process. In fact, that's all they have. If you go beyond a month with the YMCA, you're paying multiples of that monthly rate. So we're going to skip on ahead to the three-month rate. And again, it's very busy. I realize that, but this was the level of detail that I think the community and the council needed to see. As you can see, if you compare the youth for our Woodland Aquatic Center, it's $150. The value doesn't mean, um, that you only get 30 visits. It's an equivalent value. In other words, if you went for three months at $5, that would be 90 times five or $450. You pay for a three-month pass in 30 visits. That's what the value means. After the 30th visit, your next 60 days are free if you swim every day. Manitou does not have a youth three-month rate. We extrapolated from their daily rate to determine that if they had one, it would be about $120 for a resident. As we go down, if you look at the adult, 25 to 59, the YMCA says you're not a senior until you're 65. We say it's going to be at 60. And again, we use the same logic. There's a $210 fee for a three-month for an adult. If you look at Manitou, they're non-resident, which is what our folks would pay. If they drove down to Manitou, it's $218. Our rate is less than theirs. Same thing with a young adult. We don't have a young adult category. The YMCA does, so our young adult is the same thing as the adult. Adult plus one, this is one category that has me a bit concerned and I'll talk about it in just a little bit. The idea is that if you are an adult and you bring a child or you bring another adult, then, uh, there should be some savings associated with that. Perhaps there's too much savings associated with this. It would be $270. Manitou offers the same thing. Theirs is $327. All the things in red are categories that the city does not offer, but others do. So we felt it was important to make that comparison. I'll go all the way down to senior, 60 and plus. Our logic was, let's make the senior, let's make this as easy as we possibly can to avoid confusion. So we said that a senior rate will be the same thing as a youth rate. It just seemed to make sense to us. We saw that model used in other communities and so that's what we want to do. The family rate, as you can see, $360. It pays for itself in 15 visits. Over a 90-day period, the family rate pays for itself in 15 visits. The fifth family member? I'll be honest with you, when we did this the first time, we said that the fifth family member would be just the additional cost of the youth or $150. Uh, after lots of discussion, we realized that that wasn't necessarily appropriate. So we reduced that down to $50 for that fifth family member. And the sixth and more family members would be $25. So a significant savings for those families that are larger than four people. Let's continue on to six months. You're going to see similar logic applying in similar comparisons all across the board. Our Woodland Aquatic Center six-month youth is $225. After 45 visits over a six-month period, it pays for itself. Manitou does not have a non-resident rate for that group of people. I don't know why they just don't. The adults. Now, this is the one place I believe that we are slightly higher than the Manitou non-resident. We say $315 for an adult. They say $310. It's where their logic varied from what we could track in ours, which were fairly consistent. And then again, you can look down where the adult plus one is. And I'll skip all the way down to the senior, which is the same as the youth, which is one that you did earlier. The family up to four, $952. And again, in a six-month period, after 23 visits, all the rest were free. And again, with the fifth and sixth family member, we had those much, much higher, much, much higher. And we've reduced it drastically from $225 to 75. And then the sixth and more, we even cut that in half. What we noticed with Manitou, uh, in some of their, perhaps it's at the annual pass, is they don't offer a cut rate for the fifth family member and sixth and more. They just charge as another child. What we do know though, is there are many places the YMCA D1 that caps the family at a family. It does not matter how many people are in that family. I've heard from people, I've heard from people that think our rates are too high for a family. They're too high for multiple family members. I've also heard from people that say, if you give a huge discount to large families, then you're discriminating against my smaller family on a per capita fee structure. Whether you like it or not, that's, that's what I'm hearing. So it's part of that balancing thing. We're trying to balance so that the chili tastes good to everybody. Let's take a look at the annual. This is the, the passes, um, that we really hope a lot of people take advantage of. The youth, $300. 60 visits. So in the course of 365 days, if you come 60 times, you will have paid for your youth pass. The adult, a single adult, 420. Same thing, 60 visits. An adult plus one, $540. Go all the way down to the seniors. Again, seniors, same as the youth. And then the family. Family up to four people, $888. I'll tell you that when we went through the first iteration of this, that number was $960. We went through another iteration of that and got it down to 920. And then the last iteration that we went through got us down to $888. We have been listening to the community. And again, we reduced the fifth family member from 300 to 100 and the sixth and more from one, from 300 all the way down to $50. So a significant savings for those folks that have a large family. Again, a family pass pays for itself after 37 visits. If you look at Manitou non-resident in the blue column, you will see that in every single category, our fees are significantly less than what theirs are. Let's take a look now at the plunge cards or what some folks call punch cards, pass cards. If you look across the board, you can see ours are for the youth, slightly higher than Manitou. For the adults, slightly less. And then the seniors, again, slightly more than Manitou Springs non-resident. The 20 punch card, again, the youth a little bit more, the adults a little bit less, and the seniors a little bit more. The Pike's Peak YMCA does not offer, um, that for seniors. They do for youth. You can see what it is. It's $70. And then, um, this is for a 10 punch card and then a 20 is 140. So our rates for the punch cards are significantly less than the YMCA. Let's talk about, a little bit about definitions. Many facilities offer, uh, other discounts associated with the passes. Many do not. Ours, uh, are listed here. With the three-month pass, you get a discount on some lessons and some Red Cross training. The longer the pass you have, the greater discounts you get, the more options you have for discounts. The annual, as you can see, a free session group lesson for $5 off all lessons. We think that's a huge benefit and 50% off of water fitness classes. That's a benefit that many other, uh, facilities do not offer. Uh, other discounts, you can receive $20 off any family pass. Uh, pass cards must be paid in full at time of registration. That's been also a concern within the community and I have a proposal for that that will protect the community and also benefit the consumer. And again, only one discount, uh, can be used. Let me talk about the definitions of other discounts. Uh, because I know there's been some concern about those things that were listed here. And I just want to share with you my logic or our logic as we came up with this. What we're finding in almost every, uh, facet of the entertainment industry is that seniors get a discount. We did, we adopted the same philosophy. What we're also finding is that military folks get a discount. If you go to the movie theater, if you go to almost any segment of the entertainment community or the, the customer service community, there's a military discount. We're also, we also know that first responders have achieved almost that same level of, of respect, if you will, that the military has. And so there are many places that first responders get discounts. Fully, one quarter of my city staff, your city staff, are first responders. A third of the city staff works at the police department. I didn't feel that it was appropriate to provide a benefit to a third of my city and not give that same benefit to two-thirds. I'm aware of communities that give passes to their city employees. I'm aware of communities that give passes to all their elected officials and all their appointed officials. We followed that same approach, but not a free pass. They just pay simply the lowest rate for that particular category. So as an example, a daily pass, any of those people in the definitions of discounts would have, would pay a $5 fee instead of whatever their fee would assess. Teachers, uh, also receive discounts, uh, from, in many different segments of the, the service industry, the entertainment industry. That was my logic behind those different discounts. The family, the, the, the family as we know it has changed. So we said two adults, two kids, or for the single parent household, one adult and three youth. An adult plus one is an adult plus anyone. The refund policy, here's something else that's just a bit different than many other communities. We will work with folks who maybe have bought an annual pass and six months into it, they have to move. We believe that it's appropriate to give them a refund of some of their money. What we will do is refund them the difference between what a six-month pass would have been and a full year pass would have been. So they're basically paying us for the time that they got to use the facility. We think that's a fairly fair approach. These are things that the YMCA and Manitou do, some of their definitions. I don't need to go through each of those. You can read those if you're leisure. So one of the other things that drove some of the decisions that we made had to do with the, the revenue stream and the expenses. And the revenue stream is generated by the rates that we charge and the number of people that we have come to visit. So the next several pages are going to speak to the assumptions that we made based on input from our region, professionals, from input from the Woodland Aquatic Project and from the Ballard King study. This is the revenue stream and in just a few moments, we'll talk about all the different passes. So this is the daily admission, the number of visits. I will tell you that it's slightly less than what Ballard King suggested and that's because Ballard King went straight from a daily admission to a six-month, three-month, or annual, actually to an annual. They went from daily admission to annual in their assessment. And so we needed then to do our best to close the gap between what we thought was realistic between daily admission and annual. So we split up some of the daily admissions into the three-month, uh, category that you'll see in a few moments and then split the annuals between the annual, six-month and three-month that we have. So our numbers for the number of visits and the number of passes per year are extremely close to what Ballard King suggested in their feasibility study. So these aren't the number of people. These are the number of visits. Because remember, a family unit is defined as four people. Three-month pass. The Ballard King study, I believe, said 765 people would buy an annual pass, that order of magnitude. We generally split that number into thirds, saying a lot of folks will take advantage of the three-month pass. Perhaps not as many for the six-month pass. But we think a lot of people are going to take advantage of the annual pass. So at the end of all of this, and then the plunge cards, the Ballard King study had only one of the other, I can't recall if it was 10 or 20, but they had about 260 plunge cards, 370 plunge cards. So we split that into a ratio that we thought was reasonable. 370 plunge cards. So we split that into a ratio that we thought was reasonable between the numbers of these different categories for the plunge cards. The plunge cards are, you show up, you show your card, they punch it, and you get 10 punches or 20 punches, and then you buy another plunge card. There's some other revenue we project from Learn to Swim program, and these are all on an annualized basis. Learn to Swim, water fitness, things that we will sell in the pro shop, special events, birthday parties. We already have four reservations for birthday parties, programs, meeting room rental, party room rental, charges for towels and lane usage. We believe on an annual basis that our total annual revenue will be on the order of magnitude of $540,000. What we need to do now is to compare that to the expenses. This is, again, a recap of the revenue. In the far right-hand column is 2018. In the next column to the left is what's left over for 2017. All the wise folks in this industry tell us to be prepared, that when we determine the fees and we publish them and we populate the database, that we will have lots of people wanting to buy fees, or buy passes. So that's what you see here is our projection. In this column that totals $198, that's what we believe our revenue will be as we finish out 2017. And then you can see the total revenue matches what was just on the previous page for 2018. The expenses, I won't go through every single line, but I just want to, to just share with you what we think the salaries and benefits will be. We will have what amounts to about 17 and a half full-time equivalents within the aquatic center. There are three full-time, the manager, the assistant manager, and the head lifeguard. And then about 29 part-time employees that will manage the front desk, that will be the lifeguards, that will be some of the maintenance folks. So those are spread out over about 100 hours of operation each week. More expenses, and again, the right-hand column is the year 2018, and then the next column is what's left in 2017. And these are just normal operating expenses. We pulled these from the budget council that you're going to see soon. So that's why all those numbers are to the left. That's our, just our accounting system. But it was the easiest thing for me to cut, paste that into this presentation for this evening. We've got utilities and insurance, and again, projections for 2017 and 2018, supplies to keep the facility running. The supplies component of the Ballard King study was based on really good information that they had. Ours is based on, now we know exactly what the products are. We know what the filters are, we know what the body of water is. We have a really good idea of what those expenses are going to be. So we've been able to hone in on that quite closely. So this is what you need to understand, is the difference between the revenue and expenses. And again, the column that is in the middle is the residual of 2017. And you can see that we have a recovery rate that's actually greater than 100%. And that's because we believe a lot of people are going to buy passes in the last three months of the year that will carry over as passes into the next year. The following year, not quite so rosy, but it's actually extremely close to what the Ballard King study said. Council may recall that the Ballard King study said that the subsidy would be $98,000 per year. If I apply four years of inflation, that comes up to 110,000. What we think the subsidy will be on an annual basis is about $127,000. I will tell you that your aquatic center staff has been extremely conservative in the revenue side, meaning that we think we will produce greater revenue. And they've been extremely conservative, meaning they've overestimated the expenses. So we believe that we'll have a much better number than that. I don't know what it's going to turn out to be just yet. This is the best information that we have to conclude this. I'll also say at this point that I think it's going to take two or three years before we really balance out the operation of the facility so that we can have good data to predict future outcomes. We do that with sales tax. We know what the patterns look like. It's going to take us a few years of operation to see exactly how this is going to turn out. I promised you an approach to a recommendation to allow for paying by installment for annual fees. Here's, here's our biggest concern is that if, and I'm using this number just as a number for easy math, if an annual pass were $1,200, and we allowed a family to make that payment in 12 monthly installments, that's $100 per month. At the end of three months, if they decide they no longer want to do that, they cease their credit card payments, and suddenly they've gotten significantly more value for significantly less money, thus taxing the rest of the paying public to cover for the expense that they should have incurred for that three-month rate. So here's an example. Let's assume that a family of four wants to buy an annual pass on the first day of the year. The rate is $888. Our process would allow for that total amount to be paid for in three payments. On January 1st, they would pay the three-month rate. On April 1st, after three months, they would pay the next three-month rate. On July 1st, they would pay the residual of the annual rate, and they would be paid full till the end of the year. We think this protects us. We think this gives a benefit to the consumer. What we found throughout all the research that we did in many different communities is some of them do have a pay process, but in everyone that I looked at, it always costs the consumer a little bit more. This doesn't cost the consumer more, it just causes them to make payments that might be a bit more than what the monthly divided amount would Counsel, I promised you a tremendous amount of information. I think I've delivered that to you. We have done significant research around the, the state with those folks that we think we're comparable to, and folks that we've been compared to already. I mentioned to you that the, and I think that's enough. Last thing. One of the, one of the concerns that I heard earlier was that, it was from a, 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 a single person who said that this person couldn't even afford the single rate, which is $300 per year. One of the things that the Woodland Aquatic Project hoped to do was establish a scholarship fund. They hoped to continue their 501(c)(3) so that they could then become the entity that awards scholarships for families that they would deem deserving of discounts from that perspective. We want the Woodland Aquatic Project to, to stay alive. They've made wonderful contributions. We want them to keep doing those things, to keep raising money so that they can provide those scholarships to families who may not be able to afford these rates. We think these rates are fair. We think they're appropriate. We think that these rates allow us to deliver a pot of chili to the community that satisfies everyone for an extended period of time. I'm happy to answer any questions now, counsel, or we can defer to comments from the audience, and then have a dialogue as we move forward. Once again, if we find a place in here where our logic is wrong, we certainly want to explore that.
Great. Thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. Great information. Ken?
David, I guess I'd like for you to address the issue of, after we get into this, you know, maybe, you know, is it a couple of months or a year down the road, and we kind of assess where we are? Are we free to then go in and make adjustments?
Absolutely.
Based on real time and what's really happening? And how soon would we do that? A year, and three months, or six months? Or what do you think?
I do believe that the, the rates can be adjusted over time. My, my desire is that they not go up. That's the worst-case scenario. It's much easier to, to reduce rates. That's much more palatable. So I have no desire to raise rates. But I do think that it's going to take a couple of years until we understand completely what, what the cycle looks like.
Sure.
If we open this up, and we're, we're not getting the rate of, of joining that we thought we would, we may have to come back and make a, a change. And if we do that, then I would want to, of course, give refunds back to people to that new rate. I think that would be an appropriate thing to do. But I think it's going to take more than three months. I think it's going to take more than a year to get to a place where we really understand what the, what the revenue stream is, what the actual expenses are going to be, et cetera. We've started filling the pools up with water today. The filters are going to start running soon. We're incurring expenses as of today. And so we need to make sure that we have the ability to cover those expenses with the smallest amount of subsidy from the general fund as possible. Remember that most aquatic centers in the state, actually, all that I'm aware of, and all that many municipal managers are aware of, don't make money. Neither do a lot of our other park and rec programs. This is not dissimilar from that. But we want to keep that delta as small as possible.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead now.
Thank you, David, for giving us a nice detailed presentation. As you know, I like numbers, and I, I think it really gives a whole lot better idea of what we're looking at, revenue expenses. I wanted to make a, a little motion or whatever about city council. We would, at least I would like to present to city council, a sense of the council to defer the special discount and leave, leave us that we shall have no other discounts other than those that are normally offered to every other citizen of Woodland Park. That's my feeling. Maybe some of the others would like to defer that. It's not much on your bottom line, but it might, might, I think that we don't want any special treatment up here, so we'd like to, we need, whatever, we'd like to offer to just take the standard discount that everybody else gets as this is in Woodland Park. Thank you.
And we've heard from almost every councilman, and, and as far as I know, we're almost unanimously in favor of this, at least as, as far as I know. The process is, is pretty clear to everybody, I hope. We established some fees, knowing that there's going to be some concerns. We had numerous conversations with people in the community. We received numerous emails. And clearly, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is, is establish some fees that makes some sense for you and makes some sense for the city. Because we do have a bottom line that we have to, we have to adhere to. And so, again, when we, as we further the process today, we're not going to make any decisions today. What I'd like to hear from everybody that wants to is to come to the podium and give us your thoughts. We'll get thoughts from council while Suzanne and David take copious notes. And we are going to try to do the best we can to get the right rates for our community. So nothing's going to be decided today, but we are very anxious to hear your input. That said, we are in public comment, and I don't want to hear from 10 people saying exactly the same thing. So if you have new information, we'd love to hear you. If you don't, and you just want to come up and speak, we'll give you about a minute. If you don't have any new information, that's fine. We don't want anybody to leave today and say, I didn't have a chance to voice my concern. That's really important for all of us that sit here. And so we'll give everybody equal opportunity. I've got a list of some, and like I said before, I'm sure there may be some here that haven't signed on my sign-up sheet. So I will be sure to do the best I can to make sure everybody gets to speak. And after we have public comment, then we'll come back to council, and, and we'll go from there. So assuming everybody's happy with that, then we will move forward. And I'm going to start at the top of my list in Todd Wiseman. Please, when you come to the podium, if you will state your name and your address, and please speak in the microphone, not so much for those that are in this room, but for those that are listening at home. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for taking my comment. And I have a slideshow for everyone tonight. Again, my name is Todd Wiseman, and I live at 338 High View Circle in Woodland Park. Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, and fellow citizens, I plan to say what I came to say in under five minutes, and to use 10 pictures. What I thought the pool would cost. Answer: between $500 and $600 for a family. This is in the range of what the consultant's own feasibility study said would make the pool fiscally viable while causing the city to run a deficit of $100,000 or less. While the city has now proposed rates for families that are now 50% higher than the feasibility study, they are also projecting to run a deficit much greater, as David just indicated, than $100,000. Oddly, though, while the city is proposing a minimum 50% rake hike on families, most of the other proposed rates are at, or even below, the feasibility study rates from 2013. Why are families being asked to pay much higher rates than the study indicated, while other demographics in the community are paying at or below what the, what the study indicated? There are some, as I believe the city has at least indicated, that will pay nothing. That was reported in the news recently. And I know that there are some people intimately that were involved in this project that hope to pay nothing after third-party payers pay some for them. So next slide. What it actually costs. This is me looking at the city's webpage when they release their rates. And I would like to add, this is after the city moved locations for the pool to save money, cut out the sun deck, the hot tub, the senior therapy pool, and required the citizens to raise additional funds so that the slide could be built. Despite all of this, the rates for an annual family pass have gone up 50%, from about $600 to $900. As best I can tell, city staff is both unapologetic for what has happened, and they are not being held accountable for what has happened. Instead, they are expecting the citizens to fix this problem, whatever budget problem they created. They are coming after families and youth at the 11th hour with much higher fees. How I plan to get my kids into the pool, because each one costs so much. What it feels like when the city tries to explain the high cost for the pool to me. I'm very confused. You'll hear comparisons made with Manitou pool prices. We've already heard them tonight. But is that such a good idea? I give you example A. Manitou Springs is, by self-profession, profession, a bit weird. This is a gentleman who was photographed walking down Main Street in Manitou. He looks like he is being attacked by a chrome-plated octopus, and that he likes it. Example B. Manitou Springs charges for parking throughout their downtown. There is no way you would follow Manitou's lead in this area. Yet we are being told that Manitou's lead is the sensible way to price our new pool for its citizens. And one more thing on this. It is my understanding that the WAP Board gave the recommendations to the city based on a Survey Monkey internet report to the community. In that survey, the WAP Board, that's the Woodland Aquatic Project, said that 88% of respondents would pay what Manitou Springs residents pay, and 12% would pay the even higher YMCA rate. 88 and 12% of respondents is 100% of the respondents. Did the WAP Board even properly form the survey to see if residents actually wanted to pay less? It seems to me that the WAP Board and city got the answer they wanted by biasing survey results. They did not let the citizens speak freely. Rather, they led us where they wanted us to go. Meanwhile, the citizens had full reason to believe that families would pay about $600 per year. That is, after all, what the city relied upon to know that the pool would work financially. This is an actual picture of me 45 days from now. So what should the goal be? Mr. Mayor, council, you have been elected to serve the citizens. City staff, you are being paid to serve the citizens. Woodland Park Aquatic Board, you have generously volunteered to serve the citizens. That said, let us honorably fulfill our commitments, and not only say that we built a great aquatic center that will serve the next generation, but that, as the Woodland Aquatic Board says on their own website, that it is truly affordable for and accessible for citizens of all ages. It is both reasonable and fair to make final pricing on the pool that is in line with the Ballard King study. Others are paying rates in line with that study. But why not families or youth that want an annual pass? I have one more thing.
It is the monkey who gets cucumber. The one on the right is the one who gets grapes. The one who gets cucumber, note that the first piece of cucumber is perfectly fine, the first piece he eats. first piece he eats. Then she sees the other one getting grape and you will see what happens. So she gives a rock to us, that's the task, and we give her a piece of cucumber and she eats it. The other one needs to give a rock to us. And that's what she does. And she gets a grape. And she eats it. The other one sees that. She gives a rock to us now, gets again cucumber. She tests a rock now against the wall. She needs to give it to us. And she gets cucumber again.
So this is basically the Wall Street protest that you see here?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's one thing I'd like to take exception to and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Buttery, Mr. Wiseman. I think we do a tremendous job of letting our citizens speak freely. We're in this room tonight to do the right thing and I don't appreciate it when you say something that's not true. David?
I'll address a couple of things and then, Mr. Mayor, maybe we just hear all the other input. The question on why take Manitou's lead? No, I don't want to be attacked by, I'm sorry?
No, sir. Okay, we'll get back to that then later.
No, I don't want to be Manitou either and attacked by an octopus. But when I looked at what made the most sense from a market perspective, Manitou and the YMCA were the closest things. That's what all the research we did said was, look at your local market. The Ballard King study gave us some great information. I don't believe it gave us great information on rates. So we looked at other places. If you have in front of you the spreadsheets, if you go to the annual pass, the Woodland Aquatic Center is $888, Manitou is $969. If you add the fifth family member, ours goes up 100, theirs goes up 124. Number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, and I know there are families that have 10 and 11, ours goes up 50 and Manitou goes up 124. It was the best, closest thing that we could compare to. I'm not sure who pays nothing. If you're referring to seniors who might get some silver sneakers, we've not yet made a decision on silver sneakers. But that goes back to that pot of chili where some people want seniors to pay more, but they want their families to pay less. I've got to have a balanced pot of chili. Some insurance companies do give, from a fitness perspective, we get reimbursed for some of that. So I don't know anyone who's going to pay nothing. Yes, our family fee, as we determined it, is almost 50% more than the Ballard King study because after our research, that's what we were led to think was a reasonable rate for our community and still be significantly less than the YMCA, excuse me, or Manitou Springs.
Thank you, sir. During this process, I've got four or five letters that I will intersperse and read and I'm going to start with this one. This is from Kathy Wright, Woodland Park resident, dear city council. The new proposed rates for the community pool are not only extremely high and unreasonable for larger families, but they are also contrary to what was promised when the pool was approved. The answer that $600 can turn into well over $1,200, depending on family size due to inflation, doesn't make sense. Inflation hasn't increased that much in four years. I strongly hope that the city council will reconsider and make the pool to be affordable and follow through with pricing that was promised to get the pool approved. Clearly, and I interject, some of this is relative to the first round of rates that came out. For the over $1,200 that would cost my family to use the pool, other places like the Y, for example, would offer not only a pool, but many other facilities for the same rate. The pricing isn't justified based on the services offered and isn't in line with other mountain communities. Regardless of if we use it or not, as residents of Woodland Park, we're left to pay for the pool in our taxes, so I respectfully ask that the pool be made approachable for use. Sincerely, Kathy Wright. Okay, we'll go on to my next, my list is Lacy Scott. Sir, are you Lacy Scott? Good. If you'd like to speak, sir, if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Lacy Scott. I reside at 1029 Center Street. I'm particularly interested in the various discounts. Has there been a projected estimate of the monetary value that those discounts would represent, particularly in light of the deficit that the pool would run?
The short answer is no. The longer answer is that it's relatively easy to calculate and I can probably work on that through the course of the meeting. But some of the discounts, again, were intended to honor our military, to honor our first responders, and to honor those people who serve our community of volunteer capacity, namely our council and all the boards and commissions. But I can try to work on that and see. I don't think, I think as it was pointed out, it's not going to be incredibly significant if you, and no harm intended, but if you look at our council, the vast majority are over 60, so they would qualify for the over 60 discount. So only one discount applies and so it would still apply to some, but not to as many as you might think. But I'll see if I can come up with a number.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And having, being a senior myself and having been in the military and having been a first responder, I certainly appreciate those considerations for those people who are in those categories. However, perception is oftentimes as important or more important than the truth. And I would ask the council to consider some of these discounts, in particular, to the elected officials, both of the school board and the city council and the aquatics board members. The perception I believe that the community has is it's an unfair freebie and I have to wonder if the city attorney was consulted in regard to those as they might be defined as gifting of a governmental entity to individuals.
I can tell you that I did not consult with the attorney on that. It's a very common practice throughout this state to offer discounts for a variety of things. The singling out of those three entities, as you said, was again to honor their service, their volunteer service to the community. I understand your point about that. There are some senate rules that talk about the amount that people can be gifted. We can look into that. I don't believe we have violated any of those laws, either intentionally or unintentionally.
And again, perception oftentimes is more important than fact.
And one of the, and I respect that tremendously. I deal a lot with perception in my job. One of the, some of the communities that we talked to said that they offer those discounts, actually free admission, for many of those people that are on that list, but they don't publish it. It's just done. And that's not how I like to do things, so I wanted it in front of the community to understand that. We've heard how the council feels about their benefit, if you will, and we'll see how the rest of the discussion goes.
And I appreciate the openness of it and encourage the council to pass Mr. Carr's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Okay, time to read another letter from Michaela Christensen. Good afternoon, my name is Michaela Christensen and I am a longtime resident of Woodland Park as well as an avid swimmer. Recently, I read the WAC, she meant WAP, fees flyer on the website and am amazed, astonished, and astounded by the reasonableness of the rates. For almost 20 years, I've been swimming three times per week, which is now about $720 per year. To think that I'll be able to purchase an annual pass for $300, only an additional $10 per month, if not a senior, is almost incomprehensible. The YMCA outdoor pool season, summer passes were $9 daily, 120 members, 325 non-members. For fall and winter schedules, 6 to 8, 30 minutes, sessions are $25 member, 50 non-member. 6 to 8, 60 minutes, sessions are $40 to $80. I realize that the Manitou pool might be somewhat less expensive, but the proximity, facilities, and aesthetics are incomparable. I recently returned from a weekend at the Hilton Bonnet Creek Resort in Orlando, Florida, which had a three-acre pool, lazy river, complex, water slide, and cabanas. I'm so fortunate that now I just have to walk a few blocks to have an even more magnificent environment with a view of Pike's Peak and a myriad of amenities. Thank you so much for all the hard work, perseverance, and commitment to provide our community with this spectacular Woodland Park Aquatic Center. Sincerely, Michaela Christensen. Thank you, Michaela. Next on my list is Jerry Simon.
And as Jerry's coming up, Mr. Scott, no, please come on up, Jerry. I just did some quick math, very quick. So I believe that the order of magnitude of revenue lost, if you will, by offering those discounts, so all the things that were listed there, is about, I would guess, $35,000 to $40,000 a year.
Okay, Mr. Simon, welcome.
Jerry Simon, 365 Sun Court, Woodland Park. While you're on that topic, my board, I'm, by the way, I'm president of the Woodland Aquatic Project, we're a 501(c)(3). We've been raising money for the pool and we've had some great contributions from the community and I thank everyone who has contributed, including several who are sitting up here tonight. Great work, everyone. My board, as also, would prefer that we not receive that discount. So appreciate the offer, but it's something that we don't think is worth the loss in our public will. So just, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me, how many people are here because they're concerned that rates are too high? Show of hands. And how many of you, keep your hands up, believe it's specifically it's family rates that are too high? Okay, so how many think it's not just family rates? So a couple, but the biggest issue I just want to point out is family rates that we might want to take a look at. David, I think you've done a terrific job and I know, and I've said this before, this, your job would be much easier if you didn't have this pool on your shoulders right now. And I know what it's taken to contract this, arrange to get the staffing set up, and do all the work that's going on right now to get this significant facility under operations. I had the opportunity to visit there last night as we were starting to fill the pool and it is beautiful. I'm very excited about that. And even though we have a good turnout here tonight because some people would like to see the rates adjusted a little bit, the good news is you're all here because you care about swimming and you want to use the pool. So I'm actually encouraged by the turnout I see here. I appreciate why everyone's here. I think that we do value the opinion of the community and I've heard some comments that people aren't listening, we are listening, but everyone can ask for things, but you don't always get what you want. It is our position that the community is already investing a lot of money for the capital costs of the aquatic center. They're going to pay some subsidy, that the city ought to be positioning that rate structure in order to get the greatest cost recovery possible so that we're not burdening the non-swimming public with a facility that we're going to use. Now, I don't necessarily know what the right rate structure is to maximize that cost recovery, but I think at least until that pool is paid for, and my board believes that, that's what we ought to be trying to achieve. I don't want to see the cities tied up so much that they can't take on some things like the roof over the hockey rink, which I think would be a great community asset The last thing I'll say is getting on to what David said, we are, we know that wherever the rates are going to be set, they're going to be too high for some people and that hurts me. I wish that, I wish that the pool was free, but that's not possible. We are going to continue on as a 501(c)(3), hoping to, we already have $5,000. It's just for scholarship opportunities for people who might not be able to afford a pool. I hope that we can continue that work, going after some grant monies. I hope we can still see some monies come in from the community for people who might be able to afford that. And we're looking for help. Some of my board has been working hard for three, four years and would like to move off from that. So if you have an interest, please don't hesitate to reach out and contact us. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. You know what, I just can't stop here. Jerry Simon and Nancy Sells are here today and Pete Peters. And I'd like them to stand up and get some recognition very quickly. These folks have worked more than just a little bit, Jerry, the last three, four, five years, as far as I know. And I can honestly say, without their assistance, we may not be sitting here today. So let's give a big round of applause for the Woodland Park. Thank you very much. Couldn't have done it without them. Jerry, I remember you giving me some little swimsuit some years ago.
I expect you to wear it.
I bet you do. My question for Karen and Cindy is, do I have to get him a swim cap? No, he can swim without a cap. Okay, good. Okay, we'll move on to my next letter, which is from Jacques Schneerli. I hope I pronounced that right. I am unable and frankly do not want to attend tomorrow evening's city council meeting, meaning today, so I want to make my sentiments known to the mayor as well as the council membership. The rates as published are fair and comparable to surrounding facilities. With one caveat, however, a discount for city staff, school employees, first responders should be taken off the table. My family and I, there are seven of us, have been waiting for this for 20-plus years. The local Facebook page and a few of the very vocal members have lit their torches and sharpened their pitchforks and are marching to the chambers. Best wishes to all city officials, as I anticipate this meeting to become ugly. I know better, we know better, that's not what we're about. And so back to what Mr. Wiseman said before, and not allowing the citizens to speak freely, I really do take offense to that because here we are and the proof's in the pudding, folks. These rates were considerably different just two weeks ago, 10 days ago, a week ago, yesterday. And every change I've seen has been positive for those folks that think the price is too much. Please don't tell us, don't tell me that citizens cannot speak freely in our community. I resent that. Okay, we move on to Karen Francis. Okay, we move on to Karen Francis.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. I'm only going to take a few minutes of your time. My name is Karen Francis, I live at 500 Ta'opee Circle, and I've lived here since 1992. I'm here tonight to ask you, please, let's find a way to work together to reduce the pricing for all community members to utilize the aquatic center. I know I'm not alone when I say, as of right now, as the pricing stands, it's made impossible for us to enjoy and purchase a membership for this long-awaited pool. I'm talking a family of 12, and my grandchildren. This saddens me immensely. This was supposed to be a family-friendly facility for the entire community as a whole, not the financially elite. I'm not here to debate why we're over budget, under budget, poor planning, pricing overtures, or why the weather played a major role. Quite honestly, I don't care. What I care about is asking us to pay for this. These possibilities of overpricing should have been discussed prior to them being published. Pricing should have been taken into consideration for the community and fees always be put in the forefront. If the pool isn't being used because families can't avoid it, or can't afford it, I apologize, it's a lose-lose situation for everybody. Please, let's find a way, reduce the pricing, there has to be a way we can work together so more people can benefit and enjoy our community pool. You know, my family lives on a tight budget, and when we go over budget, we eat peanut butter sandwiches for lunch. So my advice is, let's go buy some Jif peanut butter and work on it. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Francis, thank you very much. I've got a Jerry Murph Tanner, is this relative to the pool?
No.
Tanner Coy?
Tanner Coy, 240 East Highway 24, Woodland Park. Thank you, Mayor. I actually would like to speak on two issues, but for the sake of focused conversation, I'll keep my comments on the pool for now and return afterward. I would just like to say that as a member of a public board who would, I believe, qualify for a discount under the proposed fee schedule, I would feel very guilty if I accepted a discount to this facility. I volunteer for a public board because I wish to give myself to the community, and accepting some sort of a discount as a thank you or an honoring for my service, I appreciate the sentiment, but would respectfully decline. And I think that what we're seeing with council and with the WAP board is probably common among all of those who are volunteering. So just reiterating the sentiment that you're hearing tonight. That said, and with all due respect, regarding the staff discounts, I respect staff very much, the school, district employees, and the city employees, but in my opinion, regarding a publicly funded project, we are all equals, as citizens and taxpayers in this community. And we should be treated that way when using the facility, and for the government to decide that government employees deserve a discount in honor of their service, where those who are paying for the facility don't, I think is a big mistake. I heard it said that first responders were on the list because they've achieved nearly the same, quote, "level of respect," end quote, as the military. And to me, listening, that implied that I had not, and the rest of these people had not. And I don't appreciate that. I think everybody here deserves the same level of respect. And at any point when that facility, if it ever sees positive net revenues, those discounts should go to everybody equally. That's just my opinion, thank you for letting me share it.
Okay, last on my list is John Devoe.
John Devoe, 940 East Kelly's Road. I don't have any rocks and monkeys to throw at you, so you'll have to get by with what I say. When we were all evacuated for the Waldo Canyon fire, I ended up, me and Salida, and I took the time because this was an issue that long ago, and went and talked to the director of their pool. And if you've ever been to Salida, they've got a heck of a big pool there, and it's heated, it's a heated pool from water from Poncha Springs. It was given to them by the federal government. They got a gift of that pool back a long time ago. Back then, however many years that was, the city paid an extra $160,000 to make that pool whole. So $120,000 today, that's doable, but they want that there because it brings, it's such a draw for bringing the people in. Now, in my crude way of doing math, an adult that has to pay $100 for 20 visits, that's five bucks. A youth has to pay $3, because it's $60 for 20 visits. Where can you go out as a couple and with two kids, four of you, for $16? Can't eat at McDonald's, can't go to the show, so where is this so expensive? And if you want an annual one, $888, divide that out. It's $2.46 cents a day for the whole family. Not going to go every day, every other day, it's under $10. So where is this supposed to be so expensive? Some people, if they can't afford that, then they need to talk to the aquatic board and see if they can get some help. But you've got to pay for this thing, because if you lower those fees, what's going to happen is, the city's going to have to kick in more money, and all the people that are paying property tax and sales tax are going to pay more. So, tough job. There's no good answer to this, but you've done what you've got to do to get this thing started. And if it changes later, it changes later, but we need to get it going. And it's really a pretty facility. I hope your projections are short, that you're actually going to get a lot more folks in. It's not that expensive when you consider what it costs to go to McDonald's, you can't get by for $17 for four people. You just can't. So you've got to look at the price of the entertainment, too. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Okay, I have nobody else on my list but as promised, if anybody would raise their hand and still have something to say, especially something that hasn't been said, and if not, okay, great. Young lady, you can start for us, you know the protocol here.
You are so good to call me young lady. Mr. Mayor and Board, my name's Cindy Weiss, I'm at 3229 Regent Drive. I realize sticker shock is getting everybody on this pool. I echo a lot of the sentiments about family rates. Even though I don't have a family, we need to attract more young, growing families to our community. So I hope you will put that in your consideration. We want those young families here, that's what's going to keep Woodland Park young and growing. I do have a question about the silver slippers. I don't understand that. This is not a medical facility. I don't understand why they would not be paying. Would we be getting money, would the city be getting money from Medicare? My husband's a pharmacist, I know how much money we get from Medicare, okay? So I don't, I don't know if that is really a primary need for this community. I realize we have a lot of people that are 60 and above, but I just think that's something that needs to be looked at, and I'd like a little bit further explanation as to how that interacts with this pool facility.
I'll do my best, if I may.
Please.
Okay.
On the silver--
I'll sit down, see if you can tell.
Yes, ma'am. On the silver sneakers specifically, and I'm not an expert, so Cindy, Karen, if I screw something up, tell me. But what I understand is that there's a silver sneakers organization somewhere, and they've told us that there are only 700 people in Teller County who are eligible for that. I don't know what the eligibility requirements are, that number seems very low, since we know we have a population that is actually aging. So that number seems kind of low, and ladies, if my number's off, correct me. But what I think I understand is that for that senior rate, which would be $5, is that silver sneakers pays back to the facility $2.50. So when I spoke earlier about the bowl of chili and how some people don't think the seniors should get a discount, some people don't believe we should do silver sneakers. I still have bruises from people saying, "We've got to do silver sneakers, or you're screwing the senior citizens," because they all live on a fixed income. Another argument is, they're the wealthiest part of the community. So I don't know all the rules with silver sneakers, but I think I've hit the high points, that generally it covers about half the cost of an eligible person, and that eligible person I've yet to define.
Thank you. I saw one other hand at least. Young lady?
Yeah, I've got--
Okay.
Hello, my name is Kristen Valenti, and I live at 215 South Park Street. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all your hard work, and very excited about the aquatic center. And I hope to be kind of the calming voice or reason in some ways, because when I saw the fees, I felt they were reasonable. And my immediate thought was, I looked at the annual rate, and I started thinking, okay, I did the math, do I actually need an annual pass? I think in our excitement as a community, the knee-jerk reaction, it's almost a Woodland Park pride thing, like, yes, I'm going to buy the annual pass. And maybe not enough of us are actually doing the math and assessing, like, okay, what's my schedule like? Will I actually use it the, at least two times a week, that I think merits owning the annual pass? You know, people travel, some people are gone a month or more a year, but, you know, and how many of us have bought a gym membership and, you know, wound up not using it? So I think that those of us that are looking at the annual pass and saying, oh no, I can't afford it, need to make, take an introspective look and examine, will I, do I really, really need that? My Woodland Park pride says, yes, I need to buy it. But maybe if you really take a good, hard look, you realize that maybe the punch card is more appropriate. Maybe, you know, since the annual pass is out of my reach, maybe I do the pay-as-I-go thing, and then I realize that, well, I'm really only going one time a week, actually, you know, in reality, or maybe it's even less than that. So I just want to encourage you guys. My other point on that would be, I don't want the pressure to bring the rates down to a point that'll be hard to maintain good quality, because for myself, I'm okay with paying a little more for a good-quality service, you know, well-maintained facilities, clean pools. So that's my point. I just wanted to encourage you guys, and I'm excited about the pool.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you very much.
You bring up a very good point about what's going to work for each individual or each individual family, and our staff is determined to help every individual and individual entity figure out what works best for you. Regardless of what the rate structure looks like, we want to find for you what works best for you. But I think that's a good point, to understand that the annual pass may not be the best thing for your family. And I've got some other things too, Mayor, but we'll hear this gentleman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Mercier, I live at 640 Pembroke Drive. I think the pool's a great idea. Most of you don't know me, I grew up in Florida, and I had a single mother and I had a brother. My father died when I was real young. And she would drop us off at the pool at about 7:30, because she had to be to work at 8:00. We paid a dollar to go swimming, and I'm talking about 1970s, yeah, I know. But that equates to $3.68 today. So I would just ask you, when you're looking at your numbers, because the pool, I think, is going to be great for our youth, that you look at some type of summer special punch card. So when our kids are out of school, they actually got a place to go to. And $5 a day, I think, is kind of high, especially for our kids that are 17 years or younger. I see Dr. Bowman here today, and I think he would agree that kids who have nothing to do end up being kids that get into trouble. So if they had a place to go that's a little less expensive, I think that'd be great.
Just point of clarification, the 20 punch youth card is $60, so that's $3 a day, $3 a visit.
That's great, then. All right. But I think they should be able to go, like, Monday through Friday--
Pardon me?
--for, like, three months.
Yeah.
I mean, we look back, and my daughters are 18 and 21, and they didn't have this opportunity because we didn't live near a pool. And it's kind of funny, we go to Lake Powell, the only time they like to get in the water with life jackets on, because they're afraid of water, is if I get into the water with them. So I think it's very important that we have this going, and we have programs to teach kids how to swim, too.
So for three months, since you're thinking of summertime for the kids, a youth would be $150, so that's--
What number you got there?
Pardon me?
What's that number?
Well, that would be, then, it pays for itself in 30 visits, and so that may be where your punch card comes in best, because that's $5.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, that's not true. It's 90 days, so what, would that be $1.67?
There you go.
$1.67.
Thank you.
Michael, thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, sir. Jerry, good? Are you next? We're not going to talk about a different subject now. I got you on my list, I got everybody on the list, let's stick to one thing at a time. Anybody else on the pool right now?
Good evening. It's past my bedtime. My name's Colton Montgomery, I live at 1260 Sunday Street in Woodland Park. Mostly, I came here to understand. I know that there's been sticker shock, I know there's people that are excited about it, upset about it for varying reasons, but I'd like to engage in a dialogue, because I do have questions, and I'm open to questions, too, because I am part of that younger demographic. I have my kids here. I was brought home from the hospital and grew up in this town, and then I came back to raise my kids here, and I'm hoping to stay, and this is one of the things that might keep me around because of the amenities that it offers. This town's changed a lot since the 80s, when I was born. So I have a question about what drove the decision to establish the rates, and how you generated your forecasted revenues? Because you said you did a lot of research, we talked about the Manitou Pool, we talked about the YMCA, but did we test the market of Woodland Park and the surrounding county for what people were willing to pay through any sort of blind surveys at varying points in the year? Or anything like that?
No, nothing more than what I believe Todd Weisman spoke to of the survey that Woodland Aquatic Project asked those questions.
Those were the consultants from Denver, right?
Well, yes. I think, I'm not sure where Ballard King is out of, but they were the consultants that did the feasibility study.
Right.
And I can tell you, there was no intent to mislead people with the questions that were asked. We realized, or the Woodland Aquatic Project actually helped the consultants build that, and then they presented that to the city. So the city had no input on that feasibility study, but as I understand it, when the survey went out, it asked, it talked about comparing to Manitou, because that's who we were competing with. You know, a lot of people have talked about our rates being too high, and I wonder how many of them have memberships to Manitou, can afford Manitou. So we're less than that, and so we're hoping that we'll be affordable. We're hearing otherwise tonight, but we're also hearing from others that it is. But we're taking it seriously that some of the concern has to do with the family rates.
Yeah.
What was your other question? The projections on numbers?
So basically, just what research was conducted. You said you did a lot of research, anything-- Anything other than Manitou, did, did the citizenry of Woodland Park, the surrounding county, Teller County, was anyone asked any time in the last four or five years?
Oh, yeah.
Would you pay $600 a year, yes or no? Would you pay $900 a year, yes or no, to kind of gauge the appetite that the citizens have?
No.
No?
No. Again, through the, this study, and through the questions that came about for the study, when we did take it to a vote of the people to allow the city to go into debt to build the pool, there was a 70% rate supporting it, which is, which is fairly high. The survey speaks to what the market can handle. That's one of the things it made reference to. And again, we felt our market, the comps, were Manitou, and were less than Manitou. So we think we've, we've met that criteria.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree that it's in range, but I think it's on the high side.
Okay.
I will figure out a way to pay for it for my family. To be candid, I can't afford the annual rate, but I'll figure out another way, because I do want to engage in the amenities. So maybe just consider that when you're looking at the data as it comes in, because I know that's going to influence the decisions, and especially if you want, because you said so yourself, and your estimates dictate that you're counting on around 26% of your annual revenue being driven by the annual...
Yes.
...purchase, right?
Right.
So maybe consider that with influencing the market to purchase in the way that you would desire.
Sure.
If any sort, and I'm not talking about huge price breaks, but it will influence behavior of purchasing.
Sure, I understand. Volume versus rate is the point I think I'm making.
Right. So that, that would just be my perspective, that I would learn as someone who is going to be sending my small kids there, and I need to figure out a way to pay for it. And, yeah, frankly, I can't afford the annual rate right now, but some of the other rates, like you said, the summer, you, breaking it down, summer, it would end up being like $1.70. That's totally doable, but for, as far as meeting your goals of guiding the populace to purchase the way you'd like, as well as giving them the best possible price, just keep that in consideration. But, yeah, as, as a citizen, though, are there any questions that I can answer for someone who, yeah, who falls in that demographic, demographic of, no, I can't afford this?
Understand. Does the, the opportunity to spread the payments out over that process that I described provide any relief?
Personally, for me, no. I think for some people it would, because of their month-to-month cash flow. But, but I tend to look at my cash flow and my budget six months, two a year at a time, but that's how my family does it. That's how I do it. So for me, no, but I can't represent everyone on that. But that's my response to that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Love your approach. Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for hands. I'm going to kick it back to council, and Noel, why don't you start first?
I guess I'm going to...
I'll tell you what, let me go to David first, and then we'll come back to us, so we can have all the information we need.
Just to, to address a couple of things that citizens said that may answer some of your questions as well. We did do a lot of, of research. One of the things we found is that the pots of money to cause an aquatic center to run efficiently come from a variety of sources. Some of the communities that folks have been commenting on, that have lesser rates, have subsidies from other ways. Mr. DeVoe mentioned Salida and the federal government. Many, many communities have recreation districts that levy, a mill levy, to help cover the costs. One that I spoke to recently, for $750,000 of operating expenses, $550,000 come through separate taxes. This community didn't do that. We figured out how to build it with our existing revenue stream, and now we're going to pay for it from operationally, from the people who are going to use it, not the general taxation base. Other people have, like I said, property tax increases associated with keeping the pools running. I do want to talk to, about Mr. Coy and his comments about respect. My comments had nothing to do with respect for citizens. It had everything to do with what the, the country seems to be doing as it relates to military and first responders. If you go to almost any facility, first responders get the same discount as military. That's the only point. The only point I was making is it had to do with respect, nothing to do with citizens.
Thank you. Noel?
Okay. I would just like to let the public know that this is the first time councils see a breakdown of this. So we're kind of going over it on the fly and looking over the numbers. So if you think council had any decision in, oh, sorry. If you think council had any decision in these numbers, we weren't involved. In fact, the first time I actually saw the fees was on Facebook. And then that kind of went nuclear. That's just a good word to say. But now that I have these breakdowns in front of me, I kind of went through a lot of numbers. I kind of look at the aquatic center as entertainment. So let, let's consider it entertainment. You're going to take your kids out for a movie, you're going to take your kids out for dinner. How much would that cost? So I say, say you go out to a movie once, once a week, you take your kids, $30, right? So, okay, maybe more, $50. Well, okay. I mean, you're looking at...
No, 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 no. We're not going to, we're not going there.
You're looking at...
Sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
You're looking at over $2,000 a year that you spend, but you're breaking it down over the year. So I'm, I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm, I'm breaking them down to the, the most logical way of looking at them. So I look at the number of visits, so I'm focused on annual. Can you bring up annual up here, if you don't mind?
Sure, it'll just take just a second.
Well, I'll, I'll just go through it while you bring it up. So I looked at $888 a year for a family of four, and it says 37 visits. I say 100 visits. That's twice a week. That's reasonable. Seven days, you might go twice a week. That breaks down to the individual cost of $2.80. A pack of bubble gum is $2.29. So when I break it down to a reasonable number, I went up to a family of six. Family of six, 100 visits for a year is $1.73 per person. So when, when I, when I hear people saying, "The family rate is unreasonable," actually, I'd rather buy the family rate or the annual rate, because I'm getting the best deal. And if you think about it, if you think about the adults, a lot of adults swim almost every day. So that number even breaks down, if I swam every day, it almost comes out to almost 50 cents a visit. So when you start breaking down the numbers, and you start looking at what it compares to, your internet cost, your TV cost, your phone cost, your Netflix account, this is, this is the lowest entertainment that we can offer without giving it away for free. And, and understand that if we do reduce the rates, we still have to pay for it somewhere else, and that's going to come out of taxes, sales tax. So, I mean, we can do that, I'm sure, but I, I don't think it's going to, going to fly. So I look at the rates as reasonable. I'm sorry, some of you might not like that, but I've broken them down to the value, and then I look at other things in my life that I use for entertainment, and they are way more expensive. So if you start looking at these numbers the way I am, it's very reasonable.
Thank you, sir. Paul?
First off, this is the first time we are seeing the rates, and I believe that you have done a lot of work on the rates and put a lot of thought into it. That being said, I want to hit on the discounts. David Butterby said that it was, had a value, doing quick math, and I noticed putting us in the ballpark of $35,000 to $40,000 per year in discounts. I believe those discounts should be taken off of the table, and, and that the pool should grab those dollars. Family rates are too high. We've heard that. And in some cases, and maybe in many cases, it is too high. And it is a hard nut to crack. We need to look at that. You have a good mix of prices, well thought out. I appreciate that. What I don't appreciate, and no offense to anybody, I don't appreciate at our meetings talking down to our citizens who approach us with different opinions or ideas that they have, based on what we have as a council or as individuals. We should try to avoid those rabbit holes of talking down to our citizens. They have a legitimate argument to them. We hear it, and we move on. There should be no insult taken. And I just pass that on as some advice. Maybe later in the future, that advice may be passed back on to me if I take offense at something. But we should look at it as a governing body, and we should look at this city as citizens. We're here to service the citizens. We're here to work together. I appreciate everyone who's come here tonight and expressed their opinions, and the city is listening. And because you have expressed your opinions before this meeting, many things have changed, and changed, I believe, for the better, for both sides. We do have to pay for this project. It was a very expensive project. I hope to see it as a success. I really pray that this pool is a success, and that we don't have debt, and that it is an asset to the community. With that said, I rest my case.
Thank you, sir. John?
Well, I want to thank David for what I consider to be a, a great summary of the work that's going on. And I know earlier on in the process, and I was going to talk to Jerry about this, but there was a small group of folks from the Woodland Aquatic Project Board who went out and visited, I think, at least half a dozen facilities in the state, and got a lot of feedback, and there was some research and data that came out of that, and also helped to set some of these fees. I just say frankly, I haven't had the opportunity to go over all this data, since my colleagues have mentioned, this is the first time we've seen it. I agree with what Noel and Paul have had to say. There's another component here that maybe ought to be considered as a part of the payback from swimming, and that's, that's a wellness component, I think. Those who swim a lot, who knows? You might be looking at less pain, less medications, and who knows what else? Personally, I probably won't use the pool. I don't like to swim. I realize it has great value, but who knows? And I don't need a senior discount. And I agree with my colleagues, there's no way we ought to be accepting discounts. I think in terms of what else can we do, I, I have one thought. I hate to bring it up, but I will. Maybe there's a cutoff for the size of families, and, you know, perhaps after, pick a number, six, perhaps. Other members can go and enjoy the pool and not have to pay anything for it. Anything beyond some kind of threshold. Maybe it's a family of five, or whatever. I think that's something that we ought to take a look at, and look at the loss and the gain from doing that. I think we've heard enough comments tonight that there are citizens here who simply say they can't afford to pay the family price with several members of the family. The approach that perhaps you look at a plunge ticket and not consider paying annual fees, I think that's, that's a good, good option, and that ought to be looked at. Otherwise, I think we've had a good discussion this evening. Are we getting closer? Well, I hope so. We're going to open the pool on the 29th of October. We've got to know what to charge. It's everybody smiling, I hope. So let's get on with it.
Thank you, sir. Kenny, what do you got?
Well, I would just say, certainly greatly appreciate all the research that's been done. From a business standpoint, this is the kind of thing you have to do to make good decisions. Certainly doesn't work for everybody in every instance, but you have to gather this kind of data, and it is the first time we've seen it. And plus, the info that has been gathered by the Aquatic Project and all the effort they've put into it, I mean, we, I think it's fair to say, everyone has done the best they can to get as close as we can to the right answer for our community. Is it perfect? No. Is it close? I think so. But we'll live with it, I think, for a while. As David said, let's see where it goes in the next six months or a year, maybe a little longer. We're, we're going to be able to make adjustments. If we see we can lower the price, okay. Hopefully not have to increase it. But we have to cover the cost. We didn't get a tax increase to pay for this thing. That was nice. The people who didn't want to use the pool didn't want to pay taxes for it. So those who are using the pool are paying for it. That's what we decided as a community. But, so I think the right decision has been made, a good projection has been made. Is it perfect? Probably not, but I think it's as close as we can get with the information we have today. Let's move forward, continue to gather that information, and make adjustments if we need to down the road.
Thank you, sir. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came here, I was swimming every day at Jewish Community, Community Center in La Jolla, and I was in great shape. I could do all kinds of things. And one of the regrets is, we didn't have a pool. So I was a lap swimmer, so I'm, I did it every day, paid 30 bucks a month to use the whole YMCA, or the JCC facility, you know, that's 17 years ago, I guess. So it'll be a good, it's not just a recreational thing. There's a lot of us who have no way to do impact physical exercise, me included. I, I have no ability to do any impact walking, running, anything like that. So there will be a lot of swimmers that'll look a lot like me and older, and we will be looking at that as, as a medical facility, too, despite the fact, you know, it's not been characterized that way. So I, I look forward to a lot of seniors gaining some health back, or gaining a couple more years to have fun with their grandchildren. I have one question and another comment I want to, I want to make. I'm going to ask the question, then I'll make a comment, and let's leave it to you. I came from California, and families are defined all kinds of ways in the United States now, and so I think we may have an interesting, that's, that's sort of a question, how are we going to define families? So I'll leave that there. But the other comment I wanted to make is that I'm in a lot of boards and organizations, we're always looking for silent auction material, and boy, these punch cards look like the ideal thing. So everybody out there who's got nonprofits, and they run benefits and fundraisers, I'm looking at these punch cards as a really good silent auction item.
Absolutely. There you go.
The family definition that we arrived at, originally, we said two adults, two children. Then we said, you know, there's a lot of single parents in our community, so we went with one parent, three, one parent, three children. So just a four was the, the definition of family. And to transition to Councilman Schaefer's comment about a cap, it was suggested to us many times, many different areas, to put a cap on a family, and, and we considered that. And that was part of our logic for reducing greatly the fifth family member and then the sixth family member. So for an annual pass for that sixth family member, it's $50. Every, every head or foot or swimsuit that's on the deck causes us to have to staff and make sure that we have enough people. Now, one person isn't going to make a difference on whether we have five lifeguards or six, but it, it does have an impact. The numbers that come out onto the deck do have an impact on, on the expenses for providing that service. And as I mentioned before, smaller families, I've heard from, say, per capita, if you have, you cap it at a certain number, there's discrimination against me. We thought we'd reached a reasonable compromise by charging $50 for a child for an annual pass. A minimal amount, but it does make a difference. It does help us cover some expenses, but I understand your comment about family cutoff.
Let me, let me follow up. Let me see, how do I say this? I know families that have two sisters living together. There's the LGBT community who have family definitions. How, are we going to go by address? What are, I mean, this is, I don't want that job, by the way, but it sounds like a hard job to...
No, it simply says two adults, and so the... And so it, it doesn't discriminate on gender. Uh, you know, we're, we're, the more fair you try to make something, the more difficult it becomes. We have latitude to say, okay, so it, maybe it's two kids living with their grandparents. That's a family unit. So we want to be as generous as we can with that definition. If they're all from the same address, that too plays a role. I couldn't define every, I couldn't provide every aspect of the definition, but we understand what families look like these days.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to conclude this conversation. Couple of things that come to mind to start. Cindy and Karen, um, there's some rates on here that when we're selling, uh, to people, when we're trying to take care of people, I think it's, it'd be really beneficial to point out all the possibilities, which I know we will, but clearly those punch card rates, um, can save some people some money. And so, um, I've said this before, it doesn't matter what kind of pool we have. If we don't have a great operating staff, a safety staff, um, and, and people that are willing to provide customer service, then it's not going to matter what it looks like or what people are paying, because they'll just stop coming. And I have every confidence in the world in the people that are going to operate. And so we want to continue to get everybody's input. Again, this is kind of a fluid situation, but clearly today, the charge for city staff are twofold, and correct me if I'm wrong. A, we want to see if we can do something with family rates. And B, um, at least as far as we're concerned, we want to withdraw from any possibility of, I think that's clear. I don't know about first responders and, and, and military, but at least where we're concerned, I, those two things are, are clear. And so I think if we can get those two things accomplished, at least for the beginning, and then, you know, six months down the road, folks, things might change. You all have businesses, things change. And so, again, you can see with this group on my right and this group on my left, we're going to do everything we possibly can to make it right. For those people that can't afford, I get it. Um, let us help you. Let's work on the scholarships, everybody. Maybe to what Val said, maybe someone here will buy, um, you know, one of those plunge cards and give it back. And maybe that's something that could be donated. And so there's many, many opportunities. But just so everybody understands, clearly there's two sides. I, I know you do. We have to operate this pool and, and make it reasonable because we have other things that the city needs to pay for. We're thrilled to be able to offer this amenity to our community. I see smiles in, there's nobody in this room right now that doesn't want the pool. Right? We've been waiting for thirty years. We're going to have one of the greatest facilities in the state, I can guarantee you. We've got great staff that are going to operate it. So work with us and we're going to work with you. And I can't wait, I, I said this a hundred times, can't wait for that first two-year-old or the first ninety-two-year-old to jump into that pool. Because of everything we've talked about today and more. So thank your lucky stars, really, that we finally brought this to fruition and we're going to have a great facility for everybody's use. Thank you for all that came and, and provided comments. I hope it's clear to everybody, because that's who I am. I hope it's clear that we're here to do the best we can to honor our citizens, to work for our citizens, and to, to do the best we can for our citizens. Are we always going to make you happy? Absolutely not. But we are going to do the best we can. And I hope this process today proves that to some people that, that didn't have that confidence before. So again, thank you all for your comments. And you know what? I can't wait to see everybody October 29th for that grand opening. And before that, as you well know, David said it a hundred times, that pool filling up, I think, right now, or, or maybe full on one side. If you want a tour, right here, he's ready to go. And no one more excited than taking on a tour, because I've been on a number of them, than our city manager and, and our staff. They're anxious, they're willing, they're waiting. Um, so do it. Take, take my suggestion. Go take a tour of that pool, because it'll bring a big, big smile to your face. And it's not going to be here just today or tomorrow or ten or twenty or thirty years from now. Uh, just about everybody in this room will be outlived by that pool. So thanks again for all your input and, uh, I, I think we're heading in the right direction. I hope you all agree. Okay, that's it. I have two more people for, or three possibly, for a public comment. Uh, Mr. Jerry Good, you would be first.
Sir, if you want to take a break.
This is the last thing we have. Will this, is this going to take some time? What do you anticipate? Okay, then let's move forward. Are you okay, Ken? You okay, Val?
Sure.
It looks like we've probably got fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe? You good with us?
I wonder if you were promised to cut it off.
If it, if it looks like it's going to go further, we will, we'll take a break. Jerry, a lot of people here, a lot of people tired, so if you will make your point, we appreciate you being here.
Um, I'm Jerry Good. I have a business at 120 East Midland Williams Log Cabin Furniture.
Um, I- Excuse me, Jerry. I'm sorry. Let me just, folks that are leaving, if you would, graciously and quickly, so we can continue the meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Jerry.
Uh, thank you. Um, listen, uh, it's come to our, it's been brought to our attention, and I'm going to read this as you guys have a copy, that, uh, the city managers decided to terminate the employee, employment of Ms. Darlene Jensen. We, the citizens and business owners of the city of Woodland Park hereby petition the city to retain Mrs. Jensen as the Main Street Program Coordinator. Mrs. Jensen has proven herself to be a valuable asset to our community, as a hardworking, honest, trustworthy employee of high moral character and a reputation for integrity and business ability. Her professionalism and overall effectiveness have been a tremendous benefit to the Main Street Program and to the bene, business community of Woodland Park. What you're going to notice on here, this is just a couple of lunch breaks of mine, taking a stroll down the street. And there's many business owners, business employees, and a couple of citizens that are in the Main Street District that gladly sign this here. I think it's an injustice that's being done. We're asking for your, uh, uh, intervention in this. It should not be taking place. She brought in the Small Business Revolution into this town. She's created a business community that is working better together than it's ever worked. I respect her, every, all the businesses respect her, and we're asking for your intervention in this.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening again. Tanner Coy, 240 East Highway 24, Woodland Park. And, uh, I said earlier that I respect the staff. I meant that. And Darlene Jensen is one I respect very much. And, uh, on the heels of her, uh, I guess, being terminated, I'd just like to add my voice, uh, to those supporting Darlene Jensen as someone I've had excellent experiences with. She's demonstrated unwavering commitment to the citizens of Woodland Park through her role as the Main Street Coordinator. She's won the trust and support of many of the people, myself included, and has been able to keep a wide array of mixed personalities glued together as our Main Street Program has moved towards certification. I do not know the details behind the decision to terminate her employment. And I want to say, as someone who has employed dozens of people over eleven years in Woodland Park, I do respect the position of an employer. And I do respect that there may be things, uh, with that relationship that the rest of us aren't aware of. And, and, uh, Mr. Butter, you have the authority to do what you're doing and your judgment is one that we're all expected to trust. That said, I don't understand why this has come as such a shock to so many in the community, including the Main Street Board, who she was working for. It seems to be causing yet another chasm between city and citizens. And I don't want to see that happen. But it's happening before my eyes. I hope we can all find a way of, uh, working it out in a way that avoids any further damage to the community. Uh, that's it for me, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, folks. Elijah Murphy, uh, 204 West Midland Avenue. Uh, I am a DDA representative, the DDA rep to Main Street, and I'm a business owner on Main Street. I would hope the council would give every consideration to, uh, applying the city charter and allowing, uh, Ms. Jensen an appeal under, uh, Section 13 dot one of the city charter. Ms. Jensen has been an awesome asset. And this came as much of a surprise to many of us on Main Street. We know this town's at a turning point. And it's a turning point in history. Real estate's booming, everything is going crazy. Uh, we're growing rapidly. And with that growth comes change. I want to think that we're changing and, for the better, even though some people are change resistant. One of the things that I noticed about the change resistance when I was walking down Main Street, I collected a few signatures myself for this petition. And one owner refused to sign it, based on, he said, "No, I'm not going to do that. I, I, I don't trust some people and I would fear reprising against my business." Now, why in the world would a business owner on Main Street feel that? Okay, as I said, I'd like to believe, believe that we're changing for the better. We are on the eve of Main Street achieving what is called designate status, which opens up the large grants. And on that eve, we see a prime player get benched. A person of integrity and character, her candor and her willingness to help others. I, uh, the woman has come to my business many times, letting me know what's going on and what, how I can get involved. Those are such hard qualities to come by these days. And why in the world we would get rid of somebody like that? She's ju, she's simply been an asset and helped to guide that organization. Um, I think the worst thing I seen her do was to get in a spat with somebody over integrity and following the rule of law when applying the funds that were there, because somebody didn't want to use them correctly. Okay? I can second guess the motives of what the change is coming to Main Street. I could, I, I, but I'm not going to. However, I do have to question the judgment involved. I'm an employer of over twenty people in this community, and I've discovered that people are long on talk and short on production. When I have an employee who does their job, I prize them and I treat them very well, because they are very hard to come by. Especially when I'm paying them to nine dollars and thirty cents an hour to wash dishes these days. I pay them a little bit more, but that's the minimum wage right now. Fifty-four dollars a day, roughly. Almost fifty-five. So, in a ca, in a town such as this, as such as Woodland Park, we need employees who can do the job. And we need employees who exercise due diligence and who carry stalwart morals and ethics. I get it why, um, attorneys make so much money. I've been doing a lot of reading and I've been studying the law. Uh, David? Colorado Revue statute, Title 24, uh, Chapter 18, Paragraph 104, will give you your answer on whether or not the city can give discounts to the employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, but what I see happening right now is an attempt to somehow change Main Street. Uh, there is considerable damage to Main Street at this time. We have to go back and we have to rewrite the, the bylaws. We found out the bylaws that we passed the other day at the last meeting were legal. And, and in accordance with Colorado Revue statutes. So we are going to have to go back and we're going to have to redo our due diligence and make sure that it's done correctly. I ask that the city do its due diligence, because, um, we have detected conflicts of interest and we have to collect, we've also detected that the law has been broken. Okay? We are going to try and set it straight on Main Street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We will move on. We don't have any public comment that I haven't spoke about already. And so we'll go to reports and we'll start with me. I'm glad that Jed Bowman is- Please come forward, sir. You'll just state your name and address when you get here before you start. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Mike Elmont. I live at 105 Denwood. And I'm one of the contractors that did a lot of work on the Memorial Park project. And I'd like to get a status update on what the payment is for the people that have been unpaid so far.
Please.
Mike, I'm, I'm happy to do that. We've had a discussion about this. The contract that the city has is with the general contractor, CMS, out of Colorado Springs.
Correct.
They in turn hired numerous subcontractors, you being one, and, uh, a myriad of others. Through some process that's not the city's, the general contractor has not paid the subs. So the subs have submitted to the city certified-
Verification of claim.
Verified statements of claim, uh, for an amount of money. Uh, we were, uh, one payment short, the final payment, to the general contractor when the city understood that there were many subs who had not been paid. So what we did was we asked the subs to send us those claims. We determined that those claims exceed the amount of money that's left on the contract. When that happens, we have to then advertise in the paper two consecutive weeks. And that, I think, the first one of those will happen either next week or the week after that. I can't recall which, because there's specific language has to happen two weeks in a row. And what we understand then is once we get all the claims in, because you're, you're not the only one, we have six in now, I suspect there's others. I believe that when we total those claims, it will be more than what the gen, general contractor is owed from us. I can't begin to, to, to know why you haven't been paid. That's between you and the general contractor.
True.
So what we're doing is we're holding that pot of money. He's asked for that money. We're saying, "We're not going to pay you, because there's subs out here that haven't been paid." So at this point, we are acting on your behalf, but it's taking some time. Because I can't, I can't force the, the con, general contractor to pay you, because my contract isn't with you, it's with him. It's a horrible process. As you and I have talked, and I've talked with Mark Kiesling, I've talked with others, that it's, it, it hurts me that you aren't being paid. It's probably going to go to a judge. The judge is probably going to take the money that's left and split it up amongst the subs. Don't know that that's the exact way, but it's some process like that that's going to happen. So on, on behalf of us, um, it, it hurts us. I, I, I don't have the authority to pay you directly, because that authority rests with the general contractor.
But you're going to be publishing the notice in the next two weeks?
Yeah, I don't have the dates with me, Mike. First one is October 5th. The second will be October 12th. I think there's a ten-day period for all those to come in. And then we'll end up turning all that over to our city attorney, so that we can begin that process. So as I mentioned to Mark today, I think it's a, it's several months, not years, before it's resolved. That's still way too much time. Uh, but sadly, our hands are tied, uh, where I can't pay you directly.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for being here.
Did anybody know about this? No?
Well, council, that's business. It's what we do.
It is business. City business.
Yeah.
Contracts are another thing. I don't want to get into contracts or payments or certified payrolls or anything like that.
Right.
I'm just very sorry that this is happening to you and happening to the contractors-
Me too.
-who, subcontractors, who have been employed by a contractor doing work. subcontractors, who have been employed by a contractor doing work in the city of Woodland Park. Why we have no check and balances on payrolls and subcontractor payments is beyond me.
Then, then we have a difference of opinion on that process, and we can visit on it.
I understand we have a difference of opinion, but I'm very sorry it's happening.
Me too.
Okay, we move on to mayor's reports, and Jed Bowman, I'd like you to come forward. Can you do that for us? Come to this podium. I know this has been a long meeting, but this means a lot to me and means a lot to the community. Over eight years ago, I got to be part of a committee, as did many in this room, to hire our next superintendent, and we were told more than once that the average length of stay for superintendents is somewhere in the two to three-year range. Am I correct?
Two-point-seven.
Two-point-seven. Jed Bowman has been here for eight years, and all of you that have been in business the last eight years know the struggles that we faced, certainly through the Great Recession. And so, it's been difficult times. We've got declining enrollment. We have a lot of issues that make it tough for our school system. But with Jed and people that know, Jed and I have not always agreed. Good leadership between him and our school board, who I think is outstanding, we've come a long way. And so, today, most of you know that Jed's given his resignation, and will be gone at the end of the year because of his wife's health issues, and I just want to say, we're going to miss you, and we appreciate everything you did. I know you like to talk at length, so I'm going to say about a minute.
Honestly, I'm not prepared to talk tonight, but thank you. I appreciate the sentiment, and it's great to serve the community with everybody here. It's a tremendous place to be, so thank you.
Okay, next, you know, this quick, too. As mayor, I get to do some things that others don't get to do. Today, I was invited to Fort Carson, and to be taken downrange in a helicopter and actually see how our troops prepare for battle. It's, and I just, it's hard to explain what a great experience, and it all goes to not the guns or anything that's down there. It's all about our military, our young kids, ran into, you know, twenty-two-year-old lieutenants and twenty-four-year-old captains that are, that are going to be the leaders in our community, the leaders in our military, and who keep us safe every day. So, this is more just about awareness, I guess. I wish I had John there with me today as a West Point grad. He would have been so proud of what you see. Got a chance to talk to a number of the GIs, and just outstanding. And so, kid that grew up in the sixties and Vietnam and those kinds of things, the respect was just not there. Wasn't the way it's supposed to be. We live in a great world today, and that trust and respect that we have for our military is pretty amazing. I never wanted to be in the military. When I experienced these things today, I would, I would really change my whole approach. But we all talk about military, and I think everybody here agrees that the respect that they receive now is due, it's well-passed due, and I'm just fortunate to be a part of that, make it aware. All of you are already aware, I was at a Rocky game that a young sergeant was going to be deployed, was going to be deployed, never has been, got a standing ovation from thirty-five thousand people. And again, the point is just, right, thank your lucky stars. We're so, so fortunate to live in this country, to live in the state, to live in the city. So, when you see someone in uniform or not, you know, thank them for their service, they're just doing great work. Okay, I've got two announcements, I guess three. The first one, I almost lost, and that is, everybody's going to see this more than once. We talked about it a number of times. Twenty-ninth of October, from 2:00 to 6:00, everybody's invited. We're going to have a few soft openings prior to this for certain groups, but let's fill that pool on October 29th. It's a red-letter day for the city of Woodland Park, that's for sure. Tomorrow, and every Friday through September, from 8:00 to 1:00, Woodland Park Farmers Market in Memorial Park. Thursday, October 5th, from 11:30 to 1:00, the Chamber Lunch and Learn, caring for your business, your people, and yourself, Wall Street Options for Main Street Business and Nonprofits at the U-Pass Cultural Center. So, Deb, hopefully you get a big crowd, October 5th, at the Chamber. And then the last thing is just relative again to school, and we're off to a great start, I know, I feel it, lots of new teachers, especially at the high school, or throughout the system, but on the athletic side, which I follow maybe a little bit closer, I just want a little shout-out. Golf team qualifies two kids for the state tournament. I think it's been done one other time in the school's history. Gosh, I wish I remember. I know Shane Perkey and Jace, tell me what Jace's last name is. Cisneros, I'm sorry, Jace. Jace Cisneros and Shane Perkey both qualified to go to the state tournament two weeks from now. That's, that's pretty special. Our girls volleyball team is really making a comeback, if you will. They've been really solid, and with the exception of one or two losses, they're beating some people that they're not supposed to beat, never happens. Football team won their first game, as did our softball team, and I should mention, football tomorrow, 7 o'clock, I think it's only the second home game, but tomorrow, 7 o'clock, certainly at the school, be great to see a lot of people out there, they're playing against Sierra High School. And I'm going to turn it over to Noel here in a second, but I know the soccer program has had some success that we haven't seen before either. And so, another shout-out, I see school board members here, and certainly Jed and others, so thanks to all of you, great job, really, you know, really making a difference for the city of Woodland Park. Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got back in town last night, and there's a whole bunch of things going on with Main Street. It's a big turmoil, and they're going to start working through them shortly. They already started working through them, and I think we'll see a lot of changes in Main Street, and we'll see which end of the spectrum they end up on.
Ken?
Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, as busy as always, project, unfortunately, the date escapes me, and I see several members in the audience. The Woodland Depot, a lot of maintenance, the painting is going to be done on that. Does somebody want to shout out a date on that, or do we have a date yet? Jan or anybody? There we go. Thank you. So, we'll be maintaining that again, and you may recall, we did that some time ago. So, that's going to be one of the current projects that Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is doing amongst others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul?
Thank everybody for coming. I always appreciate the participation. I have, in my short term on council, have had the opportunity to work with Darlene Jensen, and I can say all-heartedly that she was always there 100% of the time, giving 100% of her efforts to this city, Main Street, DDA, and I deeply appreciate that. What is going on there, I don't know. I signed the petition. I really do respect this lady. I'm friends with the deers. The deers came out tonight. If you noticed when you came in, there was a whole family of deer just sitting right out there on the front lawn eating the grass. Please keep them in mind as you drive around, especially on the highways going fast. They are starting to come back down, and it was nice to see a family of deer, about eight of them, out there on the front lawn munching away. And again, I'm always humbled when I come here. I see there's a card here from Highview Baptist Church. They prayed for me all this week in their services. I am deeply blessed and humbled by their action, and I thank them, and I thank the citizens of Woodland Park, too. Have a good night.
Paul? I'm going to make this short. Few council meetings ago, off the cusp, I mentioned temporary use permits, and maybe we should consider doing a five-year for events that came to our city for more than five years. Cruz Above the Cloud has been here, what, what did he say, twenty-some years?
Twenty.
So, he has, he's had to come to council every single year and ask for a temporary use permit, so just out of nowhere, I said, "Well, why don't we just give him a five-year?"
It's, they have it, but there are others that do, so whether it's Cruz, or whether it's something else. Your point is, is is there a process where council can do a blanket pass for multiple years? Or could it be an administrative thing where it doesn't need to come to council? And that's what you and I talked about at one time.
Right, so I just wanted to put it back in your thoughts there, and let's maybe address it again, because I didn't realize Cruz Above the Clouds had been here this long, so.
Understand, it's kind of on the to-do list to consider it either as a long-term, where we may report to you, whether it's not necessarily a council action. We've done that with some other things. There are some things that you've given us administrative review over. The one that comes to mind that council might want to consider is when we have to come and get permission from you to allow Movie Above the Clouds to go from 9:30 to 10:00 at night. It just seems appropriate, since you've never denied that, to let us say, "Sure." It's never been a problem, that kind of thing. But some council members like being, having that involvement, so we'll bring that back to you for your discussion.
Yeah, and I think we talked about that, where if something does happen, then that revokes that, and then they have to come to council again to get a new permit. I was going to bring up the personnel board, but I'm handing that off to John. That's all I have.
Thank you. Tonight, we've been presented a petition with a lot of signatures about Darlene. I'm not aware of any of the particulars, and that's the way it ought to be, but I don't understand what the process will be by which some action is taken here. I know we have a personnel board, so would someone be kind enough to explain how this might work?
I'd be happy to, and Kristen's going to jump in when I mess things up, and if somebody could share that with Murf and with Jerry, since they've already departed. But pursuant to the city's Personnel Manual, a city employee has been placed on administrative leave. She has not been terminated. She is currently on administrative leave. We are following the process that's been put in place, it's been initiated. The process is this. She can request a hearing with the city manager, the city clerk, her supervisor, and the city attorney, and pending the results of that, then the city manager has three days to render a decision based on that hearing, and if the employee does not agree with that hearing, then it goes before the Personnel Merritt Board. So, we, that, that process has been initiated, and we will be scheduling that hearing in the near future.
Is this administrative leave with pay or without pay?
It is. At this point, it is with pay.
All right. Thank you.
Real quick, Deb, do we, I think we were talking about putting people on the Personnel Merritt Board. Did we fill those positions?
We have not.
Okay.
Yeah, three members, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any intent to advertise and do that, just as a general, like we do all the other boards?
That's how we will fill it, yes. We've done that once before, and there was no interest.
I know we had one member, but his term came to an end. I had a question mark.
No, we have one member still current, and that's Darwin Nakarado. He was sworn in.
But it's three.
Correct.
Council, anything else? Folks, thanks again. Meeting's adjourned.
All right, to a council.